Welcome to the special meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. Would you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call, Kathy.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Edison?
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Here. Next item is report from our planning director, EJ Divaldi.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, or members of the commission. I don't remember who I'm speaking to here. My planning director's report is going to be really brief. Just want to talk about upcoming planning commission meetings. As you know, the next meeting is scheduled for July 14th in Auburn. We have Plaster Gold Corporate Center, which is a subdivision down in the Sunset Industrial Area, and then Lake Vista Estates, which is a 15 lot planned residential subdivision in the Granite Bay area. Then we have about eight extension of time requests. Those are maps that got caught up in the recession and now are coming back to extend the life of their maps. The second meeting in July is going to be up here in Tahoe. And so far on that agenda is the draft EAR hearing for the Tahoe area, Tahoe Basin area plan. And I believe Kathy, we're going to be right here at the event center, correct? And then for August, right now, I'm determined whether we're going to be in Auburn or Tahoe for those meetings. So that's all I have for upcoming meetings. If the commissioners have any questions?
Any questions of our planning director?
Or anything else?
Okay, thank you, EJ.
All right, thank you.
Next item is public comment, and this is every item, every agenda has this on the agenda. For any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Is there any comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
Good afternoon, welcome to the lake. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I'm sorry I wasn't present at the June 9th meeting. I did send in comprehensive comments, so I was attending a graduation in Southern California. Today, I would like to ask that staff provide a presentation before your commission, as well as the Board of Supervisors, on the Brown Act. Just so everybody is under the same interpretation of how that act has been written, how county council and staff and all the Placer County boards and members understand that. I think it would be very advantageous with some of the issues that we're faced with, with a future hearing item today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, this is comments on items not on today's agenda, so.
Correct. I wanted, my name is Ron Grossi. Good afternoon. I wanted to discuss an issue which actually relates to numerous matters that on occasion will appear before the board, but it does touch upon the Marthis Valley project, but other projects also. I've been advised that this commission intends to disallow comment at 2:00 on the project by the public. If that's correct, I have some remarks I'd like to make for the record.
We're going to be discussing that when that item comes up.
So that issue can be discussed at 2:00?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none others, I didn't want to make another mistake here right off the bat. We'll go on to the consent agenda, and today we have no items on the consent agenda, so we'll move right into our time items. And it's a Faulkner Underground Garage, minor use permit modifications variance, addendum to the previous adopted mitigated negative declaration. And we have our staff person presenting it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Yelma. I'm the supervising planner in our Tahoe City office here.
Okay.
The item I'm bringing before you today is the Faulkner Underground Garage addition. This item was actually before your commission. We received the entitlement approval back in March 26th, so we're before you today for seeking a modification of that approval. Back in March, the approval essentially allowed for the construction of an underground parking structure that provides access to two residential properties out in the Olympic Valley area. Couple of slides later, I'll show you the little bit more detail on the project location itself. The approval included a minor use permit, which allowed for a residential accessory structure as a sole use on property. There was a number of variances associated with the parking structure and the proposed residential structures, variance to maximum coverage, as well as the variance to the onsite parking requirement. Subsequent to the approval before your commission, the applicants sought out and received the approval of a minor boundary line adjustment. This minor boundary line adjustment was intended to address some of the encroachment issues with the proposed structures. As a result of the boundary line adjustment, new variances were required. A side setback was created by where the new property lines would be going. I will note, however, the project as a whole, the project design, the appearance of the structures, location, construction, everything is exactly the same as what was approved before your planning commission. This is simply as a result of the moving of some boundary lines, which I'll explain in a minute here. So, just to help orient everyone to where this property is located, as you can see, the roadway here is Granite Chief Road. Right in through this direction here, hopefully the commission can see that. If not, I can switch to the other slide here. That's a fork of Squaw Creek, and then a ski run runs right down through the middle here. The proposed garage entrance is located right on the edge of the Granite Chief Road there and extends over to these two residential properties here. There's a third residential property just up to the right of it on the slide there that is, will not be developed as part of this, particularly due to slope considerations. Here's a couple of photos of the site, just to give you an idea of the existing topography, vegetation. Sites are currently undeveloped at this time. So, under the boundary line adjustment, it may be a little difficult to see off of this slide here, but the existing property lines are shown in green here and here. The boundary line adjustment adjusted the line of the property over here and to go around this garage entrance structure right there. This is the primary purpose of the side setback that's before you today. One thing I will note is the previous approval considered, or had adopted mitigated negative declaration. So, in consideration of the modification before you today, county staff processed an addendum to that mitigated negative declaration, and there were no new impacts found as a result of moving the property line. This slide here shows a photo rendering of what the garage entrance structure will look like. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the modification of the variance and minor use permit, subject to the findings, including the adoption of the addendum mitigated negative declaration and the recommended conditions of approval. I will note that there's three modifications to the conditions of approval. Condition number one is modified to reflect the side setback requirement, the zero setback where five foot is otherwise required. The applicants had attempted to move it to the full five foot, but were unable to negotiate that with the adjoining property. There can, yeah?
Explain that again, with the neighboring property.
Let me go back to this here, so. So, this property right in the middle here is owned by Squaw Valley.
Could you show that one?
Sorry. So, this is all owned by Squaw Valley. The current parcel configuration for Faulkner is a property that goes down here and extends over to provide access. So, what the boundary line adjustment did was eliminate this portion in here and move this property line over here. This area right in there is where the side setback variance is being requested. They were unable to move that property line an additional five feet so that it met the setback requirements. That's Squaw's property, so.
And Squaw's fine with this.
Correct, yes. And I'll also note that there, the previous hearing, there was some concern, which is actually relative to the condition number three, that's also being modified by Squaw Valley Lodge. And we do have an email transmission from Squaw Valley Lodge that they don't have any issues with this side setback requirement. So, the final modification to the conditions of approval would be pertaining to condition number 34, which speaks to the expiration date of the variance and minor use permit. Essentially, what that does is extends the expiration date to July 17, 2018, for all of the entitlements pertaining to this project. So, minor use permit and variance is modified today. So, with all that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Go ahead.
This is, as I remember from the first time this came to us, it's a pretty unique situation. As I understand, those properties are basically landlocked right now, and so this is, provides them the opportunity to actually do something with that property, and their, their plan is to basically make a tunnel across that ski run to go into the garage underneath one of the houses, I think, as I recall. And so, to me, if there is no conflict with Squaw Valley or any of the other neighbors, you know, it's, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a significant request they're asking, so. Am I saying, is that correct?
Actually, you're highlighting the one bullet point that I overlooked here. So, you're absolutely right. This, we'll go over to this slide here. This area right here is where the proposed garage structure is, and it's an underground garage structure that provides access to this residential lot. So, the residents will be above the parking garage here, and another residence here. And you're absolutely correct that the current situation is not technically landlocked because of that strange parcel configuration that provides very narrow access to it. That narrow access would be eliminated, but by an easement, it will provide access.
Where is the lot, where is it, again, where is, is it, is it just in that one little area where the, where the, you go to zero, zero lot line, zero variance?
It's just that one area on the side of the proposed garage entrance building, and that's the limit of where the side setback variance is being requested.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff, the commission members? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any comments?
Applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's for the applicant, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you. Gary Davis, civil engineer, principal civil engineer with JKA Architecture and Engineering. I'm here to answer any questions. Steve did a great job, though, putting that out, except that it was March of 2015 is when it was approved, not 2016. We actually have building depart, building permits for this underground garage at this time. The lot line adjustment has been approved, and we're just looking for this small 26-foot line of zero setback. We eliminated six variances by doing the adjustment, so we did to the other lot lines to make everything more conforming, make the coverage on Lot 22 correct now, and get rid of a lot of oddities that came out of the 50s when Squaw Valley was developing this stuff. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience now would like to comment on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. What's the commission, is there a motion or any further discussion?
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll recommend, the Development Review Committee recommends that the planning commission adopt the addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, prepared for the Faulkner Underground Garage project, and two, approve the minor use permit modification and variance to reduce the side setback requirement of five feet from the property line to zero feet from the property line in order to allow for the construction of the above-ground garage entrance based on the following findings and recommended modified conditions of approval, attachment D. And the findings are listed in the sequel findings on page six and seven of the agenda.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Okay, moving in second, Kathy Roque.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Edison?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. It's not quite 2:00, so I guess.
We have about 10 minutes, so the commission may want to take a recess until 2:00 when we can hear the next item.
Okay, this, we'll take a short recess, and then it will commence right at 2:00. What do the signs say back there? I don't even scan, even read them.
Listen to the people. Deny, listen to the people.
Are we on?
Are you on? Okay, he says you're on.
I might as well start the meeting. Where's our staff at?
We have to wait a moment till the staff come.
I don't know where they're at.
Just say we're going to wait a few minutes.
We're going to wait one or two more minutes, and we'll start the meeting. Is that, is that okay with everybody? Yes.
No.
I thought that was a big yes. The Marne Valley West specific plan, special plan, and this was continued from our last meeting from about three weeks ago, where we asked, the commission asked staff to provide information on three specific areas of concern. The traffic, the evacuation plan and effects on Tahoe. And also, we had closed the public comment section at that time. And I guess I'm asking the commission members what their will is on opening it up on those three specific items.
We obviously are not required to open it because this is a continuation from the last meeting. But I guess I would be open to allowing it to be open after we hear from staff. If we hold to those three topics very specific that people would address that and that they are held to the three minutes, because otherwise, we're gonna be here till midnight. So I would be open to doing that.
What's the will of the rest of the commission members?
I'm okay, given those three, those parameters. I'm okay with it.
I would simply ask that if someone has spoken before, they might withhold and let somebody new speak this time, that's all. But otherwise, yeah, I'm fine with opening it.
Okay, with that being said, and it looks like there's agreement here, I'll open it up to staff now to make some preliminary comments on those three items. Stacy?
Good afternoon, Chair and fellow planning commissioners. As you already mentioned, we are here today to discuss again the Marne Valley West of our specific plan. To briefly get you acquainted as to where the project is located. It's located off of 267 in between Truckee and the Kings Beach area, highway 267, off of highway 267. Specifically, the project site is located in the Marne Valley area. It's located within an area that already has existing residential neighborhoods. The North Star Ski Recreational Area exists there, together with conservation lands that are also designated as open space. The project site specifically consists of two components. The components consist of the east parcel and the west parcel, as shown here on this slide, that are accessed off of 267. Through the Marne Valley Community Plan, the east parcel has land designated for development. And that's for 1,360 residential units and 6.6 acres of commercial. And that area is shown right there in that, oh, I'm going on this side, please. I guess my pointer is not working. Oh. The little amoeba, the green amoeba on the east parcel. So the applicants are proposing to transfer the development density of the east parcel to the west parcel. Thank you. For the development of a 760 residential subdivision. So 600 units less than 1,360, which is allocated in the Marne Valley Community Plan. Together with 6.6 acres of neighborhood commercial serving. So meaning perhaps a clubhouse or a little market to basically serve the residents of the 760 residential subdivision. As you mentioned, at the June 9th Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission considered the entire project and received comments and concerns regarding the project from the public. And at the close of public comment, the Planning Commission deliberated. And during deliberation, items were raised of concerns and/or requests for additional information. So as such, the Planning Commission requested that we continued this item and come back with additional information on the following three items. One being the impacts to Lake Tahoe. Second being the fire evacuation, fire safety and such. And then the third being State Route 267. And what are the traffic operations and long-term or long-range goals, plans for 267. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Fran Ruger. She's with the Scent Environmental, and they are our environmental consultants, who helped assist with the preparation of the EIR. And she's gonna go over the Lake Tahoe impacts as related to your concerns addressed at the June 9th meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Fran Ruger is Scent Environmental. As is mentioned, I just wanna talk on one of these topics that you and the public had questions about. And basically, just explain a little bit about potential effects and expand on the information in the final EIR and the draft EIR about effects on Lake Tahoe. And also, a little bit about what's being done, kind of region-wide, to deal with those effects. So there were questions about effects on Lake Tahoe, including from stormwater runoff, additional vehicle trips, and invasive species from recreational watercraft. Regarding potential direct effects from stormwater drainage, from the project site, the project would drain, as explained in the EIR, to the north, to the Marne Valley, not to the south in the direction of Lake Tahoe. And that's generally because of the topography of the site. And so, and also, the distance, the project site is several miles from the lake's edge, so there wouldn't be that direct effect. Regarding vehicle effects, there are generally questions about the project's potential to increase vehicle trips in the basin and then, which could subsequently increase pollutant sources. And generally, vehicles that enter the basin could contribute to vehicle-related effects on water quality, including from vehicle emissions and fine particulates from roadway surfaces, particularly in the winter. And in order to address this issue overall in the basin, the Lake Tahoe Total Maximum Daily Load, the TMDL and TMDL report were developed and adopted to reverse the decline in lake clarity and restore deep-water transparency. So the programs in the TMDL are basin-wide, and generally, the sources of pollutants are also basin-wide. So the programs don't generally discuss the addition or subtraction of specific numbers of vehicles and don't equate specific increases or decreases in VMT directly with changes in lake clarity. Rather, Lahonton, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, TRPA, and other basin agencies, including Placer County, work to implement the TMDL, which among other things includes operational and infrastructure-related improvements to decrease the pollutants. So partner jurisdictions like Caltrans and Placer County have implemented operational improvements. Those are things such as more judicious use of roadway abrasives and increased street sweeping. They've also implemented infrastructure improvements, such as installing and maintaining detention basins and infiltration systems. And then, and as mentioned, TMDL was developed for kind of the mid-lake, deep water. The 2013 Lake Tahoe North Shore Evaluation and Monitoring Framework states also that generally, the pollutant sources that affect nearshore conditions are the same as those identified in the Lake Tahoe TMDL. So control measures to address those factors would be similar. And the framework report concludes it is anticipated that nutrient and fine sediment loading reductions that result from implementation of the Lake Tahoe TMDL not only provide improved mid-lake clarity, but also provide benefits for clarity in the nearshore. So that's a little bit about how that's kind of dealt with basin-wide. Regarding invasive species related to watercraft, similar to watercraft coming in from any area, watercraft entering the lake from any point of origin, including in the future of the proposed project, are required to be inspected for aquatic invasive species. And that's enforced by mandatory boat inspections. And then finally, the Lake Tahoe TMDL program also states that mobile sources predominantly produce nitrogen. And strategy for reducing nitrogen within the Lake Tahoe basin relies on the TRPA air quality and Transportation Management Plan aims to reduce VMT in the basin. And improvements could occur through those reductions, such as would occur through transit improvements, as had actually been mentioned by some of the commenters. So measures in the EIR include mitigation measure 10-5 for transit improvements that contains requirements for memberships to the Truckee-North Tahoe TMA and funding of capital and ongoing operational transit services and requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on, I'm gonna now introduce Rich Morehead, who will discuss the Caltrans piece and their operations and long-range plans.
Good afternoon, Rich Morehead with Public Works and Facilities. We had a meeting with Caltrans on June 23rd to discuss their long-range plan and some of the concerns the commission had. Unfortunately, I'm sure, as I know, you wanted some of Caltrans to be here, but they weren't able to make it. But they did say if any questions want to be addressed, any real specific questions, write those in to District 3, the PIO, the Public Affairs Office, and they'd be happy to get back. But just in general terms, I think we have enough information here to address the concerns of the commission. Just to go back a little bit in history, when the Marne Valley Community Plan was adopted and approved, the level of service policy in their route concept report at the time was at E, which required widening from the county line just past North Star. Subsequent to that, in 2012, they have their transportation concept report was updated and went to level of service D, which required that widening from the county line to Broadway Summit at that point. They also discussed, when we were in that meeting with them, that they do plan on updating it soon. I think in the staff report, it has some specific dates. I got a call from Caltrans yesterday that said they don't plan on starting on that date. They were talking about starting it potentially this year with adoption next year. They don't have funding or time allocated to that, so it's in the near future. Although, that doesn't affect any of the analysis that was done. The plan that's in place is the one we analyzed against. And when they move forward with that, they're gonna work both with us, Placer County, as well as the town of Truckee, in public outreach.
So can I ask? It was updated from level E to level D?
It was.
Which level D would require a higher standard road, is that correct?
Well, it requires more capacity on the roadway circuit.
More capacity?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, you're saying that they're looking at updating it again? Would it still be likely to stay at D, or would they be looking at it?
We just don't know that. I can tell you that the reports that are around it, highway 28, highway 89, and highway 80, the level of service is E.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Can I interrupt you just for a second? This gentleman is speaking, and we're all trying to pay attention, and you're waving those little flags around and notes and being disruptive to the meeting here. I'd like it to stop. If you raise them, that's fine, I guess, but don't make noise with them. It's hard enough to hear as it is. Thank you. Well, you know, we can adjourn the meeting like we did last time for a little while, if you guys want it that way. I mean, we're trying to pay attention. We asked for three specific things. He's trying to give us a second one here. And we're trying to get the information, and we're asking questions of this gentleman here. And you'll be able to make comments on these three items at a later date here, at a later time. Go ahead.
Okay, well, maybe, I think where we caught you in the middle there is maybe more of a process question than where it might turn out. But you and your, gonna look at this again to see what level it should be? What's the process that you follow?
Well, that would be Caltrans. They would move forward with that policy document, and that highway 267 is under their jurisdiction. And they would work again with the town of Truckee, us, and the community to see what level of service, you know, would be appropriate for that facility. But as I've said before, the document that it was analyzed is that level of service D policy. So that's what that SECA analysis that's up against now. Just know that there will be an update, and they update all of their transportation concept reports periodically. This isn't anything that's uncommon.
So I presume that they include in that their assessment of the growth and the current traffic uses and those types of things?
They do. I don't know about the last one that was done. But the time before that, they relied on, it was actually a town of Truckee model that we expanded out into the Marne Valley. So those were the volumes they relied on with the addition of growth in traffic, same model that we're using for this analysis. The last one, they weren't exactly sure how they did it when we asked them. So I don't know how they came up with those growth projections. But we'll make sure that it's consistent and using a more accurate model. They may have just gone back and looked at historical growth rates and used those. That's another way that it's done sometimes.
Okay.
I think one of the other questions that was asked was just a funding availability and the money that's gonna be available for highway 267. The state currently has 25 million identified as part of the SECOG MTP SES on their project list. And the county has approximately 20 million. It's 19.4 million in our traffic impact fees. So as development comes in, they pay a fee, we collect it. So ultimately, there's about 45 million that's available for the widening of highway 267. With that being said, we don't have specific project dates for anything to be done on that roadway. There's wide ranges. Part of Caltrans' funding is identified from 2021 to 2036, and some post-2036. Our traffic impact fee money, we're more flexible with that, but we don't have any projects on the horizon identified with that money either.
Is there a way to put that $45 million into perspective? Is that enough money to do? Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Is there a way to put the $45 million into some sort of perspective? Is that enough money to make the kinds of improvements to get the traffic levels?
Yeah, when you're doing this planning level, right, you don't get down to the detail or even preliminary design. When you're doing the preliminary design, that requires the environmental clearance, and all those documents here are very stale, so you don't spend millions of dollars truly getting to that point. At that high-level analysis, what I can tell you is when we developed the Marne Valley Community Plan, at the time, it was widened just 267 through the valley. I looked at that and we used recent project cost, Bell Road was the one we used. Was, I believe, a little bit of inflationary increase because of where we sit here. And looking at the numbers, they've had inflationary increase construction cost index associated with that through years here. When you look at that number today, and the 25 million that Caltrans has, North Star's about halfway in between. So, you know, there's more money towards that widening up the hill, about 30% more for that section. And that seems reasonable. You know, is it perfect? Don't know, but it's certainly reasonable for that high-level planning.
See, then maybe another follow-up question with the 45 million. Are there other sources of money that may be competitive that would be available?
Well, there's always money out there that's competitive. If you look at Kings Beach, I hear as an example, we go after grant funding and do things. But there isn't any identified today, and those aren't guaranteed funding sources. But absolutely, when we go to do projects, we look at other funding sources. Auburn-Folsom Road, for instance, we got some other funding source in that. Kings Beach Commercial Corps here, we got that. We're putting funding towards the highway 89 realignment. That's a lot of federal funding coming in. So there is, there are available other funding sources, but there are none guaranteed here. These are the funding sources that are identified.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, you and I have already had a discussion on this, and I'm encouraged that there are some dollars that have been identified to address this issue, but I don't think it's sufficient in the planning process in that I've had discussions with the town of Truckee about what their view is of the future for 267. And all their planning is related to 267 in their area on the Nevada County side, staying a two-lane road. So if it's four lanes from Placer County's line up to the summit, to me, that creates more of a funnel effect. If you don't have the four lanes going all the way to 80 or all the way to the lake, you're gonna have, I believe, you're gonna have some congestion issues. And I guess I'm continued to be troubled by the fact that there is not a date certain for things to get done. I mean, that was, you know, I commented at the last meeting that I felt that the plan that was put into place, the Marne Valley Community Plan in 2004, was an error because it did not connect the units that they were approving with improvements to 267, which I think was a flaw in that, because otherwise, you're just obviously compounding a situation if you don't have specific times when improvements are gonna be made. a situation if you don't have specific times when improvements are going to be made. So I don't, I don't think, I don't see this as a solution. I mean, I'm just speaking personally as one commission member. I, you know, I'm, I'm heartened that there is money, but I don't think it's big enough to address the issue. So that, that's an opinion.
Yeah, I think you need to look at it from the southern end. You're right, you would be taking four lanes at the summit down to a two-lane facility, and you're going to have some congestion there.
Right. Please, please, be respectful. Okay, go ahead, Rich. Did you have any other comment?
The other side, on the north side, once you get past the Town of Truckee, or past the county line, you know, you'd have a four-lane facility for a little ways there, but when you get to the bridge itself, the bridge itself doesn't have the side friction that you get, that you get down through the valley with signals, with bicycle pedestrian facilities, and...
It's a, it's a volume issue, Rich. I think you're trying to push a lot of vehicles over a very narrow span, so. Please, I, you know, I appreciate that you're supporting me on this, but folks, please keep your comments down and your hands not clapping, okay? Thank you.
So the analysis up to this point, all the analysis has been done, shows that that facility works at, at level of service E though, that is true.
Right.
But it shows that that works with, you know, and Alan Delphard's here for various years, he did the traffic work for this. But certainly, it shows that those facilities work and, you know, the methodologies that are used for that are tried and proved, and that's how we've been designing our facilities up to this point.
Okay.
I understand your concern and your questions.
Right.
I think it is a little bit different on the north end as opposed to the south.
Right.
I have a question. Just to go back a minute, you referred to $20 million saved roughly from the county and $20 million from the state, and that's earmarked for that. The state can't change that money, can't put it somewhere else on another road?
The state, I mean, anything could happen.
Well, that's what I'm just saying. It's not like it's...
I suppose the board, the board, it, the flip side of that, the board could always change.
As well, so this money isn't set just for that alone?
Yeah, it's currently programmed for that, but just like anything...
It's not set, it's not required. It's just a recommendation, so to speak.
Well, I would say it's stronger than a recommendation, but could it change in the future? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does, I got one more. Does, does any of this that we're talking about now, the money, the rest of that, have, does it happen or not happen as a result of this project? It's not directly related to this project, correct?
The Caltrans money is not related to this project. This project, if, if approved, they would be paying into the traffic impact fee program, so it is part of that county money.
Right.
So the two are a little bit different then.
Yeah, if I could, if I can jump in, Chairman, I have a recommendation, because I know since the commission has decided to accept public comment, if we could get a sign-up sheet going, and maybe just take a 10-minute recess, if you guys are favorable to that, we'll have a sign-up sheet on the table up by the side wall over there during a quick break. If everybody who wants to speak today could sign up on that sheet, then we'll continue with the speakers, and then when we get to that, we'll be ready to call off speakers, if that's okay.
I have a suggestion. Unless it's too disruptive, I'll let the commission members decide.
And we're going to start the meeting. If we could have your attention, and we'll have the third portion of our, of our three-part question answered by our emergency service person, and Stacy, you can introduce that.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Stacy.
Okay. Thank you so very much. So moving on to the third element that you, that the commission requested information on, and it's with regards to fire evacuation, fire safety, forest health and management and such. And as I described in June, the project site is located in a very high fire resource assessment program, and however, and I won't go into all the specifics, but they are located within three fire stations and, or within close proximity to three fire stations. However, in this case, the North Star Fire Department is intended to provide service to the project, while the North Tahoe Fire Protection District will provide the ambulance service. And as described in the June meeting, as a result of the specific plan, and an appendix to the specific plan, an emergency preparedness evacuation plan has been prepared specific to the project, so meaning how to educate the residents of the project in the event of a fire, or any kind of emergency, an evacuation, or floods, or what have you. And then also furthermore, staff recognize that in the Marist Valley Community Plan, there was, there's no requirement for this emergency evacuation plan. And so to foster developments in the future, to recognize the issues and the, the concerns with emergency evacuations, we've requested an amendment to the Marist Valley Community Plan, which would require all new development projects to also prepare an emergency preparedness evacuation plan pursuant to their project. So just trying to get the word out and, you know, moving forward to addressing the, this issue of emergency preparedness and evacuation. But also furthermore, and as discussed at the June 9th meeting, we do have an existing Placer Operational Area East Side Emergency Evacuation Plan. And next, I'd like to introduce John Mackel Downey. He's with our OES department, and he's going to go into what, what that plan is and its collaborative efforts that we have.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, my name is John Mackel Downey with Placer County Office of Emergency Services. And I just wanted to kind of go over a couple of talking points with you to discuss some of the emergency evacuation concept and process in general, and just trying to round out some of your understanding of it. And then after that, I think I'm turning it over to, to Lieutenant Guitron with Placer County Sheriff's Office. Essentially, as you can see from the slides, I, just as a side, I'm professionally neutral on the development. I'm not here to tell you, you know, approve it or not, or whatever, that's beyond my purview. But when it comes down to evacuations, on, on how that's done and how that works, it's a very complex process. Essentially, fire, and when I say fire, that's a generic term, firefighters and senior fire officials during a fire or as a fire is developing and progressing, firefighters are going to work very closely with law enforcement. The fire side of the house is going to make the decision, okay, we need to evacuate neighborhood X or area Y, or whatever the case may be. At that point, law enforcement is going to roll in, actually, they'll probably already be there working very closely together. Law enforcement is going to actually execute or effect the evacuation, set up the roadblocks, run in the traffic, making that evacuation actually happening. You really don't want a firefighter doing an evacuation, he's, he or she has a, has a fire to fight. So on the bat of it, in terms of the plan itself, there, it's always going to be difficult. There's no evacuation that ever goes textbook smooth. It's like running a play in football. You call the play, and then you hope things go as best as they can. It just requires a lot of coordination. The emergency notifications need to be made to the public so that the public knows what we need them to do in a very short amount of time. And there's also a broad area, there's, there's a lot of lesser ancillary issues that we have to deal with, people's animals, sheltering, et cetera, et cetera, and traffic issues are always, in any evacuation, they're always going to be a challenge. Up there, the worst-case scenario, if we had to evacuate the entire basin on a busy holiday weekend, there's no question that that would be a challenging thing for the entire first responder community to pull off, okay? So on the other hand, though, you know, that holds true for the entire western slope of California. It's worse in some areas, better than in others, just based on population density, topography, the road structure, et cetera, et cetera. The good part of it is that, as Stacy mentioned, we do have an East Side Emergency Evacuation Plan in place. I work with those professionals who are actually going to be doing it. It's not going to be OES that's going to be doing it. The, the professionals that do it, they think about it every day, they're highly skilled, and I don't have any, there's no question in my mind that they could pull off an evacuation of really any area within the basin if they were called upon to do, to do so. I'm not saying it's going to go picture-perfect, but I am saying I have confidence in, in the first responder community to get that evacuation done. This plan, the, the East Side Emergency Plan, was recently updated, it was coordinated with all the different stakeholders in the room that, that would be executing and working that evacuation. And the first responders themselves, you know, on both sides, on the fire and the law side, the, the fire community, they're very aware of the situation in the basin. They're very aware of tree mortality, the drought, the, the topography, the, the firefighters up here, they know this land by the back of their hand, and they're going to, they've run through scenarios, they're going to, they've thought to themselves, okay, if a fire starts here, when am I going to make the evacuation call? Always their first concern is life safety, public safety. So my perspective on it is that an evacuation is going to get done. It's going to get done if this development goes in, it's going to get done if this development does not go in.
Sorry, would the evacuation be any better carried off without this development or with it?
Thank you for that question, sir. I would say that there's a, there's a marginal, the, the less development there is, the, the better the evacuation is going to go. I would say, in my opinion, it would be a marginal difference. They're still going to get it done.
Okay, well, then, I guess, in your position, what, what would you look at as the problem areas then with evacuation if this development was put in?
I don't, I don't really see any major problem areas with the develop, with, with evacuations, because the first responder community is going to, has a history of just dealing the hand that they've been dealt. So they're going to evaluate it, make mitigation plans, and figure out where they have to, to work and do things differently and have, you know, if there's stress points or choke points, they're going to evaluate those and come up with solutions that are going to make it work in, in pretty much any scenario.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the people will get out regardless, how well and how fast they get out is kind of up to us to see that the choke points don't hold?
What I'm, no.
No, okay.
I'm not saying that every single person, I want to emphasize, every evacuation, no matter how simple it seems, or how benign it might seem, every evacuation is a challenging event and a challenging thing to manage and run and execute for our fire and law community, for our first responders, every single one. There's no, there's no development that can go in that's going to make it easier, okay? And there's no guarantee that every single person is going to be evacuated in any evacuation. There's always going to be people that conceivably could be missed. They might be asleep, they might not, you know, hear the sirens, they might not smell the smoke. There's always that, you know, one or two percent of the folks who just don't get the message.
Okay, well, go ahead, and I'll, I'll cut that.
So again, the first responders, they know the area, they're, and I already probably covered most of this. The other key piece, you know, I think the evacuation's going to get done, and in terms of what the, the public can do, most of the public up here is very, very fire-aware, very, very cognizant. It's important, though, to have a go-bag, have clothes packed, be ready to go, important papers, have, and have those ready to go, or backed up online, or just, you know, there's, there's been fires throughout California. This is kind of the stuff that we talk about at every community meeting or, or opportunity that I get to speak. at every community meeting, or, or opportunity that I get to speak, it's an opportunity to put this message out to the public. So, a family plan, have idea where your family wants to go. I also put out, and I've passed out for the general public, unfortunately, I only brought a hundred of them, Placer Alert is our Placer County Emergency Notification System. I highly recommend everybody who either lives in Placer County, or has a second home in Placer County, to register for Placer Alert, which you can do so on our county website, and you can, if you don't do anything, if none, if none of the public does anything in Placer County, doesn't register, and still has a landline, those individuals will still get called. If you register on Placer Alert, and you can register your cellphone, your email address, you can be in Georgia, you know, Northern California, wherever, doesn't matter, if, if the emergency responders put a polygon, put a shape around an area that needs to be evacuated on the computer, and types up the message, and hits send on that message, you don't have to be in that polygon if you've registered with Placer Alert. You can be in New York, Illinois, wherever, it doesn't matter, and you'll get notified of the situation, that if you have a property in that polygon, say it's in a portion of the basin, you would probably wanna know what's going on.
I have a question. You were mentioning that worst-case analysis, evacuation of the entire basin, what kind of a incident would you visualize that would require that?
You know, I, I, you know, my job requires me to look at the full spectrum of emergencies, incidents, you know, bad, bad type of stuff. So my worst-case scenario would be a, a large-scale nuclear weapon going off in the basin. So, there's other, there's other scenarios as well.
I guess, I guess a question I have, when you take a look at the basin, when you take a look at the basin, there's, there's 267, as a road, but there's also several other roads in the basin which would undoubtedly be used for emergencies, if one got plugged up, I guess, whatever, what are your thoughts there?
That's entirely possible. When you, when you use the term plugged up, what I envisioned, and I think Placer County Sheriff will be able to speak more eloquently on this than I can, but what I envision or would see happening, if, now, there's gonna be cars that'll get a flat tire, if they are, you know, cars overheat, you know, every, every day something happens on the road, regardless of whether there's an evacuation or not. But those cars, in an evacuation scenario, every effort is gonna be made by the first responder communities, not to fix that car, but just to move those cars off the road, and just keep the traffic flowing, and if I've spoken out of turn, I'm sure I'll get corrected by the uniformed professionals on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, and probably a comment as well. Since our July, June 9th meeting, I've been spending a lot of time talking to the emergency personnel up in this area, 'cause I wanna find, from boots on the ground, what, what they're dealing with, what they anticipate, the potential of, you know, catastrophic event, and how that would be handled. And I appreciate the time that many of them spent on the phone with me, kind of explaining it. My understanding that in an evacuation, a major event evacuation, that the Highway Patrol takes the lead, as, because obviously the highways are their territory to protect, and that they work with the other agencies, is, and, and I asked the Highway Patrol to be here, and I appreciate that, that the commander for the, this region is here today to speak on this issue, because to me, there, that's where the critical choke point's gonna be, is when we have a major event, and how are we gonna get people out of here, without, obviously, catastrophic results to, to both property and life, most importantly. So, you know, I respect the fact that the sheriff's here, but I'm wondering if in a coordinated effort, we could hear from both of them their perspectives, because I think it's really important that we find out what's, what's gonna happen if we have to face a real big event here. So, I mean, I'm not trying to cut in on the sheriff here, but I'm trying to say, who's, in an evacuation, who's taking the lead?
Maybe we could hear from the sheriff, and then from the Highway Patrol?
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, and then I'll get out of the way, if you're done with me, basically, but, you know, obviously, on California state highways, the California Highway Patrol has jurisdiction. And, and I, you know, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I think what, what I've seen in the past is the Highway Patrol, Placer County Sheriff's Office works very, very closely together, in a coordinated fashion, to get this particular mission done.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of this. Thank you.
Okay, can we hear from the sheriff, maybe, wait, Stacy, you wanna introduce the sheriff?
Of course, Sheriff Lieutenant Guitron is here with the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Lieutenant Alfred Guitron, the Field Operations Lieutenant for Placer County. Basically, kinda wanna go over what John did here, he pretty much took most of my thunder, but I'm gonna kinda get in the weeds with what we actually do. So the sheriff's primary function during this type of emergency is to actually enact the evacuations. What happens when we have, not necessarily just a fire, but some kind of disaster which requires an evacuation, we end up forming an incident command with the other allied agencies. In a certain case, it would be fire. At that time, depending on what fire tells us, as far as the fire behavior, the dynamics, and the, the field that's coming their way, we might actually open it up and form what's called an Emergency Operations Center. So at that time, there's a lot of agencies involved, and there's a lot of teamwork between fire, ourselves, the Office of Emergency Services, and CHP, any other, you know, public service agencies that might need to work together to enact the evacuation. So, in the case of a fire, we will consult with fire itself, and will determine trigger points, as to when we can enact certain evacuations, whether they be voluntary or mandatory. And again, those are set by fire, and once we reach those trigger points, we'll basically send off notifications through any other kinds of media, such as the news, radio. Placer Alert is very important, and very useful in this area, and we even send deputies door-to-door. So if we determine a certain area, once we get those notifications out, we will send deputies door-to-door, and make those notifications. During this point, there's a lot of things going on at the same time, we're identifying emergency shelters, evacuation centers, including animals as well. The egress itself, again, CHP does have jurisdiction over the highways and unincorporated roads, but we do work hand-in-hand with them to get people out, and try to get the flow of people out as smooth as possible. Basically, the last part of this, once everything is basically put under control, one thing I forgot to mention, if we do end up evacuating certain areas, whether it be a, you know, housing project, we do send roaming patrols out there to control any looting that may occur, so we do send deputies out to try to secure property as, as well as we can. And also, again, the door-to-door notification is to also try to make contact with people that might not have access to the internet, might be non-ambulatory, or may need some further assistance, so we do take care of that. The last part, basically, once everything is taken care of, is the repopulation itself, we'll basically determine that an area is safe, and we'll allow homeowners to come back in, as long as they have proof of residency. So, basically, that's about it in a nutshell, but we are the primary agency involved with those evacuations.
Thank you, any questions?
Captain Stonebreaker?
We'll hear from the Highway Patrol officer, Lieutenant?
Good afternoon, I'm Captain Ryan Stonebreaker, Truckee, CHP. Truckee, CHP encompasses the 911 Center for the entire region, South Lake Tahoe, Gold Run area, and also North Lake Tahoe, and so on. One thing I can say before we start out is I am a, I am a full-time resident here in North Lake Tahoe, so I see it from a lot of perspectives, all of my neighbors speak on my behalf, as far as a neighbor, as someone living here. I'm gonna speak specifically about the Highway Patrol, and the Highway Patrol response, and the concerns that we have. I wouldn't say specifically with any in particular development, but the overall development that's going on within the region. I can tell you that resources for all law enforcement is down nationwide, which affects us all. Our staffing levels, both within dispatch and, and uniformed personnel, is, is down from what it was probably ten, fifteen years ago. And that's not just, just something here, that's just something everywhere. But, I think what the crowd, one of the things that was asked is, is looking at the amount of people, the amount of vehicles, the amount of construction, new campground, roundabouts, do all those things make a difference? Absolutely, absolutely they do. Our role is to do the best we can, and I know no finer agency than Placer County Sheriff's Office, we have a wonderful working relationship, and we can do what we can do, but there are no miracles, right? Our job is to get people out, we have innovative ways to do that, contra-flow, close down the highway, and get people out, all going one direction. But we've seen a lot of major fires in the state of California, and it's not just major fires, it's mass casualty events, terrorism incidents, we've had things in the basin before. Our job is to, is to assist the Sheriff's Office and fire in moving people out through the highways. Now, our office is small, but one thing that I can add is that through mutual aid, through my ability and the department's resources, we can get a lot more officers here, from around the region, and that can happen. So, I think there's a, there's a lot of variables, right? Weather, what's happening with the weather? You know, is it, is it, is it a snowstorm? If mass casualty event, a snowstorm is a much different thing than a fire event, in a dry season. Dealing with, you know, air resources and getting people in here to be able to move people out. But there's a lot of variables. Construction, what's going on with a specific highway? There are limited areas of ingress and egress into this community, that's just plain and simple. And, the more population there is, the more tourists there are, the more things that happen. I can tell you that personally, just working the 3rd of July, which was incredibly busy this year. I can tell you that personally, patrolling around, and I ride around in an unmarked car, I, I see it for what it is, and I see it different than a black and white, everybody kinda behaves when they see a black and white, right? Not so much in my car. I can tell you that going to Truckee, which was a mistake, on the 3rd of July, traffic was backed from the Kings Beach region, area, all the way to North Shore, and that's right, now, okay? We have a very limited infrastructure, right? So we have to look at what all those things are. If you look at all the, I get EIRs every week, massive EIRs, massive construction projects, massive resort enhancements. So certainly, I can, I can, I share the same concerns with the Office of Emergency Services, the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, with all those things. So, your resources have pretty much stayed the same for many years in all those capacities, around the whole spectrum. I don't know if there's any particular questions, I think I have the same concerns as much as the community, as far as the amount of resources. I think, the other thing you gotta look at is the timing of the event. If it's a massive event right now, it's gonna be a big problem. If there's a duration, and we have a warning of it, or something coming into the basin, like the King Fire, or whatever, something we thought was coming in at a slow duration, we can deal with it a little bit better than something instantaneous, something at a resort, for example, where there's a massive amount of evacuation right now, where people are just fleeing.
I guess my question is, is the choke points, from your perspective on the highways, as you said, there's limited, I mean, we have 89, 267, I guess they can go towards incline, they can head towards South Lake, but those are all two-lane roads, so what are the choke points?
I think that all varies, dependent on the event. If you have, what if you have multiple fires? What if you have, you know, if it's coming from incline, going one way? It all depends on where that event is, and what it is, and how fast it's going, how fast the wind's going. I'm not a fire, fire science expert, but I can't tell you about traffic, is that whatever it is, they're gonna go away from it. So if they're going through the roundabouts, you're basically putting everything in, just like the 3rd of July. And I can tell you, the 3rd of July is that there was traffic till midnight, going eastbound all the way to Estates Drive Past National. That's now. Yeah, I'm just being realistic, I, like I said, I'm not for or against any, any project, I'm just being real, and telling you what the infrastructure has, and what it can sustain. And we are at a point now where we have, for instance, bicycle patrol, which is one of the only places in the state of California where we have it, because that's the only thing that can get around, in Kings Beach, during the 3rd of July, which is starting to look a little bit like Thornton, right? So, but once again, I can tell you that my law enforcement partners and fire departments are second to none here, and we do work very well together, and we're a part of this community, and we do the best we can.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I now would like to introduce Joanne Rubique, she's with the United States Forest Service, and she's here to speak on behalf of the Forest Management.
Good afternoon. As Stacy said, I'm Joanne Rubique, I'm the District Ranger for the Truckee Ranger District of the Tahoe National Forest. And for those that don't know, we wrap around the outside of the Lake Tahoe Basin, here on the north shore, we go just about down to the Rubicon, and we go all the way to the state line on the east side. We don't have a position on this particular project, I would be more than happy to talk a little bit about what's going on from a forest health standpoint, and I will also say that the Forest Service has responsibility on national forest system lands for a variety of resources, not just the forest, the trees, but we have responsibility for managing recreation facilities and activities, we have responsibility for fighting fire when they occur on national forest, or when they're adjacent to national forest, and we're there to assist our partner fire agencies, or our partner law enforcement agencies, because we have a little bit of all of those missions as part of what we do. Here locally, we work very closely with the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit, which is, is, their primary offices at South Lake Tahoe, but they're very proactively working on several projects dealing with forest health. And we recently got word that we're gonna be able to fold some of their planned work into a special designation that the Truckee District has been blessed with for about four years. That designation is called a Treasured Landscape, and it's established by the National Forest Foundation, which is our congressionally-designated nonprofit partner, and they come into an area that is considered a very special place, but that needs some help, that needs some assistance, and in our case, they were able to help us to stand up some of our nonprofit partners, and they've been able to bring some funding for some of the forest health projects that we so desperately needed to get started in Truckee area. So, we, in the last couple of months, we've gotten word that we're expanding the Truckee River Treasured Landscape to include a portion of the west shore at Lake Tahoe, and a portion of the north shore. And I believe that it will come around, I don't know the exact boundary, to approximately the Kings Beach area, but it may go farther, I'm not totally sure of that. What that will mean is that it will bring a focus and some help to do an even better job than what I believe the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit has been doing. They've been focusing for the last several years on improving the situation where the forest immediately abuts private land in that wildland-urban interface, where we have that, that important emphasis on public safety that John McElDowney talked about. Gives us a better chance to fight fire right in, in and around those neighborhoods when we need to. However, I need to say that this is a problem for the Forest Service up and down the state of California. We have significant issues in other parts of the state, where whole hillsides are red because the trees have died due to mortality related to drought, and increases in bug, bug populations. We're working very hard and as quickly as we can to get a handle on those kinds of issues. We're blessed that we don't have as much of that problem here locally, either at Lake Tahoe, or on, on the Truckee side. But, I believe that it's probably coming our direction. I know that the west side of the Tahoe National Forest definitely has more mortality today than they had a year ago. They have big patches of red trees, and they're working diligently and quickly to try to get a handle on that problem on the west side. We're trying to get out ahead of it, and whether we'll be successful or not, I have to say, you know, time will tell, depends on if we're faster than the bugs, and whether or not we have some more good winters like we had this last winter. With that, I guess I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, or address any specific questions you might have.
Okay, Joanne, I have a couple questions for you. On the, one of the things that I think was Larry brought up at the last meeting, was the Forest Service in the Tahoe Basin is doing some fuel, fuel modification, and maybe on the hillside that really leads up to this subdivision. And then also, you might explain, I notice when you go over the summit, there's a road there that's called a freeway, the Fiber Board Freeway, or something like that, and anyway, that looks like, to me, that might- And, uh, at any rate, that looks like, to me, that might be almost a already-made, uh, fire line. But is that a reality? I haven't driven it in a long time, I don't know.
Rich, I appreciate the question, and, um, one of, one of the things that we do whenever we plan a fuels reduction project or a forest health project is we look for those places where we can establish a, a place for firefighters to make a stand and hopefully stop a fire in these tracks as it's coming that direction. So roads like the Fiber Board Freeway that folks, um, love to recreate on is one of those places. And my guess is it will continue to be improved in terms of reducing the fuels that are alongside that roadway and other roadways all throughout the area. Because you, you never know where the fire is going to occur or where it's going to move to. We have a sense of what our normal winds are, and so you have a sense of which direction a fire is liable to be pushed. But there's, there's more in play than just the wind when you have a wildfire. Um, the basin is doing a lot of work. On my drive over from Truckee, I, I noticed looking off to the east, and I can see lots of piles off under the trees. And that's a place where fuels reduction work has happened, and that material's being piled and it will eventually, those piles will eventually be burned. And I know they will look for a day when, when it's not gonna cause as much of a smoke impact, but there will be some smoke impacts as a result of some of that work. It's a trade-off, that kind of smoke versus smoke like we had from the rim fire, the King Fire, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Here, any, any other questions? If not, thank you.
I just, by, oh, I'm sorry.
Joanne, uh, I did talk to your co-part, Jeff, for the Basin, uh, Forest Service at any rate, and he indicated that the areas between State Line and Squaw Valley and the basin, he thought is a guesstimate, they were about a third complete with doing the sanitary cleaning that's, they're trying to accomplish. And that it would take one to two years to finish it, uh, which he felt was just an estimate. But I thought that, that was encouraging if, if, if we can find, if, the other issue, of course, is can we find a place to take all that debris rather than having to burn it? Maybe there's a better option. And, and we're working on that too, as you know.
Well, I have to give Placer County a lot of credit, because one of the problems that anybody managing a forested area has right now is you take the small trees and the brush, and you need a place to take that if you're not gonna pile it up and burn it. If you pile it up and burn it, you don't have to worry about things like smoke. And you know that you're not utilizing that material for some other beneficial use for the, for the, the community. Placer County, as I said, has been very progressive. There is, I know you have a plan to build a biomass plant, um, at the, um, transfer station between Truckee and Tahoe City. And I, I, I've stayed fairly close to the folks on staff who've been working on that, and I, I continue to cheer and hope that someday that will come to fruition. Down the state of California, we used to have many more, um, mills to take, take trees that are large enough. We used to have many more cogeneration plants where they could take the chips from that biomass and turn it into electricity. And I can't wait to see the day that Placer County turns the switch and, um, electricity is being, um, produced there, um, at Gavin Creek.
Hmm, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Stacy, uh, is there any concluding remarks you'd like to make before we have some comments from the audience?
Thank you. Uh, so just briefly, um, per the request of the Planning Commission, um, additional information was provided to you today through our presentation on Lake Tahoe impacts, fire evacuation, fire safety, forest health management, um, and also the State Route 267. Um, this is also further explained in both, um, the staff report of June 9th, as well as the staff summary of July, for today's meeting, July 7th. So with that, um, staff's recommendation still stands, um, that we recommend, that the Planning Commission recommend the following to the board of supervisors. Certified the specific plan. Um, I'll, I'll just quickly go through these. Adopt a resolution to adopt the, the specific plan for the Mars Valley West Parcel Project. Adopt an ordinance to approve the specific plan's development standards. Adopt a resolution to approve the specific plan's design guidelines. Adopt a resolution to amend the community plan, as discussed. Um, the land use diagram, as well as the emergency preparedness, um, piece. Adopt an ordinance for the tentative immediate rezone, um, of the West Parcel and from TPZ to the specific plan zoning district. Um, adopt an ordinance to rezone all the remaining acreage of the West Parcel from open space to specific, to the specific plan designation. And rezone the East Parcel, um, from the, the, the amoeba that was, um, designated for residential and commercial to TPZ. And then approve the large lot vesting tentative subdivision map, which is again just for sale, lease and finance. Um, and adopt an ordinance approving the development agreement, um, which would be held between Placer County and, um, the applicants. So, um, with that, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, right.
Well, I, uh, Stacy, I appreciate that. Whoa, okay, don't need that. Um, I appreciate the information that you've provided me as I had questions as we were preparing for this. And, uh, I just wanna make sure I understand what you and I have been communicating on an email. Um, in the, uh, general plan for, uh, Martis Valley that was adopted in 2004, eighty-three hundred units were identified as sort of the vision for, uh, the future of that, uh, plan. And, uh, you had stated that, because I wanted to find out how many of those eighty-three hundred had actually been approved, uh, at this point, and four thousand seven hundred and forty-two have been approved. And that seven hundred and forty-four permits have been, have been pulled for construction. Is that, is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Let me just fix a couple of the numbers. Um, it's eighty-six hundred residential units.
Right.
That is in the Martis Valley Community Plan.
Correct, right.
Um, and then a total of four thousand seven hundred and forty-two residential parcels are defined within the Martis Valley Community Plan.
Okay.
And then as a result of our, um, search and, or research,
Right.
Of those four thousand seven hundred and forty-two parcels, seven hundred and forty-four of them have been, have been issued building permits.
Okay.
And this is just for single-family residences and duplexes.
All right.
So, what that number, or what an issued permit means, um, they've pulled permits. We don't know if they actually have finished the project or even started it.
Okay, uh, yeah, what, what I, okay, what I was trying to nail down, okay, of now the eighty-six hundred, I couldn't clarify that. Um, how many have been approved but have not pulled their permits to go?
Well, all I know is seven hundred and forty-four have been issued.
Cause I guess I'm trying to look at, like, this project is proposing seven hundred and sixty. Now, if we approve that or the board ultimately approves that, then those are on the books as things that will come in the future because they've been approved, uh, but they haven't been constructed yet. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is what has this commission or this county already approved of those eighty-six hundred units? Is, is already approved out there? Are you telling me it's not the four thousand seven hundred and forty-two, right? Is that what you're telling me?
Correct. It's the seven hundred and forty-four that we've issued for.
That's, that's all we've approved as a county at this point of those eighty-six hundred units, right?
For just single-family and duplex, single-family residential parcels and duplexes.
I'm, I'm understanding that number differently. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, let me.
Eighty-six, I'm sorry. I'm understanding.
That, that, EJ's gonna clarify and clarify.
Yeah, I think, I think what the question is, 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 you know, how many lots have been entitled?
Correct.
As compared to how many of those entitled lots have been, uh, built on? And we know, we, I don't have the answer here about how many lots in the valley have been entitled. What we do know is the number of permits has been issued, so.
But, uh,
So if you're looking, you're looking for a percentage of, of entitled lots of the total.
Well, what I'm looking for is like, the example of the seven hundred and sixty we're looking at today. If, if that's ultimately approved by the board, then it's out there on the books for some future date that it's gonna be, uh, built.
Correct, correct.
And I, what I'm trying to find out of that eighty-six hundred, how many have we already done that for?
Correct. Understand the question. I don't have the number of units at the county.
That's what I was trying to get to.
So if that, if, then, then what is the four thousand seven hundred and forty-two defined?
Yeah, what is?
Those parcels, um, are defined within Martis Valley. Um, so our IT guy did a, a search for parcels that have the Martis Valley Community Plan associated with them. So they're within the Martis Valley Community Plan.
And they're part of this eighty-six hundred?
Yes, correct. So, four thousand seven hundred and forty-two parcels were defined as being within Martis Valley Community Plan.
So does this, this seven hundred, this neck, this number that we will be voting on, will it fall into this defined number now?
Ye- yes, because we have to remember that the thirteen sixty of the East Parcel, I'll just back up really quick. Um, that's also part of the thir-, you know, the thirteen sixty.
Well, they're retiring six hundred is what they're proposing.
Correct, correct, but, but, you know, this isn't approved.
Right, but that's their proposal.
The thirteen sixty is part of that number as residential unit. So again, I have to stress, this was just queried for single-family parcels and duplexes, so.
Well, I'm still confused because eighty, okay, what's the eighty-six mean? If you're telling me that the four thousand seven hundred and forty-two are identified in the plan, then what's the eighty-six mean?
Let me step, let me step in here real quick. So, so the Martis Valley Community Plan, if I'm not mistaken, it has a build-out of eighty-six hundred dwelling units.
All right.
So if you, if you took those parcel, the, the four thousand seven hundred and forty-two parcels, those are just actual parcels, but if you take those parcels and the zoning that exists on those parcels and the number of units allowed, you're gonna get the eighty-six hundred, the, the U's. Now, are all those, is everything built out and approved, uh, at this point, entitled? No, those eighty-six hundred units are not entitled. It's like a holding capacity.
It is a holding, and furthermore, um, Waldell Ranch retired all of their residential capacity. Um, so the number, this, and like EJ said, it's the holding capacity that was projected when the Martis Valley Community Plan was adopted.
Right.
So since then, um, the number of four thousand, uh, four thousand seven hundred and forty-two parcels is what our database pulled up for, um, parcels within the Martis Valley.
That's the remaining amount.
Let me ask a question here, just to get. Stacy? Okay, um, what we're talking about, I don't know if the microphone's on or not. Uh, we're talking about the East Parcel being thirteen hundred and sixty units as far as zoning goes. And, uh, and so, at any rate, what we're talking about here is dropping the thirteen sixty down to seven hundred and sixty, which would, uh, be a reduction from the eight thousand or four thousand, I don't know what's, it, probably the eight thousand. But at any rate, we're talking about a large lot subdivision here. And so, at any rate, uh, if, if the thirteen hundred and sixty is, is already approved, as, the same as a large lot, I mean, it's, uh, it's zoned. It's zoned. And so, uh, if things change today, seven sixty would be zoned. But that doesn't mean that those are entitled.
Correct.
Because, uh, the developers would have to come in and do a small lot subdivision plan, which would be an additional, would be a condition use permit.
Correct.
As well as an additional document, environmental document.
Correct, at to some level of environmental review.
It would be what now, excuse me?
There would be some level of environment or review, correct.
Okay, they would rely on this environmental review, plus the more detailed environmental review that comes with a condition use permit.
Specific to the project, yes.
Okay, so.
And those would come back to you guys.
So, the seventy-six, seven sixty or the thirteen sixty would be part of the eighty-six? But, uh, in order to be part of the four thousand, they'd have to be entitled, right?
Well, the, the thirteen sixty is part of that four thousand.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, because the, so the, the eighty-six hundred is the holding capacity, that's what the Martis Valley Community Plan envisioned. The four thousand number was what our database pulled up as far as single-family and duplexes within the Martis Valley area.
And that's just actually parcels that are zoned, is that what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and so, so I guess the, the eight thousand number is, uh, anticipating that there may be more rezoning or something in the future, but it's not zoned right now, totally?
Or it could be like the Village, the North Star Village has residential units.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, condos and such.
So it would be, okay.
Yeah, so, um, again, we just focused on the single-family capacity, um, and duplexes.
Okay, now I'm tracking with you. Thank you.
So, uh, just last comment, then, uh, that means that if we take this project aside, that there'd be approximately twenty-six hundred something other projects or individual units that could come in and make requests of us. Like, I'm trying to define how, you know, how big could this get? And if this is approved, how many other projects could come in behind it?
Well, we cannot exceed the holding capacity of the eighty-six hundred of the Martis Valley Community Plan. But, um, on a simpler term, a single-family, you know, a vacant single-family parcel that's located within, um, off of Bass Drive, it could come in and be developed, and then it could, you know, it would become one of those numbers.
Right.
I just have a question on the community plan. It's 2004 is when it was set. Is that correct?
Yes.
Looks over there.
It was three.
Three.
Three. So we're talking, you know, decade-plus ago. And I've been involved with some other community plans, and those numbers change according to how we re-allocate on the community plan itself. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
The community plan number that you use on this community plan, say next year we have another community plan that's reviewed, that number can change?
The community plan is not changed unless we, we update the Martis Valley Community Plan.
Exactly, and, and just like we're doing in Tahoe, community, exactly. So that eighty-three hundred number is not set in, in granite forever. It can be increased, it can be decreased on the review. So all the numbers that are, we're using to compare with the, the entire bottom line that we judge against the eighty-three hundred can also change.
Sure, if, if that's requested and reviewed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Okay, um, that concludes our staff. That concludes our staff report. And is the applicant care to make, uh, a comment on these three items of additional, of information that were requested? Or no, at this time, okay. Uh, where's the signup sheet, I guess, is, I'm looking for the signup, oh, okay. And how many do we have on the signup sheet?
About thirty names.
About thirty, um, okay, and maybe we'll go ahead and, and call those out, and, and I'd appreciate if you would keep your comments as brief as possible on those three items that we've asked additional information. Uh, we've gotten a lot of correspondence already since the last meeting, and so if you would state your name and then, while your name will be read, and then, uh, just, uh, state what your, what your comment is on those three items.
Mister, Mister Chair, before you start, um, I'd, I'd appreciate a motion for the record that indicates that the Planning Commission has reopened the public testimony portion.
Okay.
So if somebody could just make a motion.
Is there a motion?
Okay.
Okay, um, okay, we'll make the motion, then we'll have a short recess.
Yeah, yeah, you got it. You got it.
Is there a motion? Okay, been moved. Is second, is second, we reopen a public comment, okay, roll call.
Can we do it voice?
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Sodison?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Guss?
Yes, now we'll have a ten-minute break, and then we'll have the, the thirty people that signed up, uh, come up into the.
Yeah, restroom break here. Everybody run for the restroom. You'll be all.
Okay, I think we're ready to start. And who's going to speak first? I think the Truckee Fire District wants to.
It's North Tahoe.
North Tahoe.
North Tahoe.
Hello, this is Michelle. I'll call names up in three, three, three at a time. The first name up, please step to the podium, and then the other two names, please queue up behind. And again, I'll apologize in advance for any names I do not pronounce correctly. First up, we have Beth with the North Tahoe Fire. After her, we have Pete Todoroff, and then Shannon Ekemire.
I'd like to remind everybody today, as we're trying to get clarification on those three items, so if your comments could be brief, and also to those three items, we'd appreciate it. Go ahead, Beth.
Okay, my name is Beth Kenna, and I'm the newest Public Information Officer at North Tahoe Fire. And this is Ron Carson, he's a PIO at North Tahoe also. And we're just here with a statement from the chief. He is at a Forest Service TRPA meeting that he actually committed two months ago, and it's actually concerning water supply for the basin. But in his absence, we are here, and I want to begin by stating that North Tahoe Fire Protection District Board and Fire Chief share our constituents' concerns in regards to the added fire and evacuation challenges to the Brockway Summit and Highway 267 area as related to the Marne Valley West Parcel Plan. In regards to this issue, we are not confident that our concerns have been adequately addressed by the applicants through the county. I'd also like to emphasize that the proposed project is not within the boundaries or sphere of influence for North Tahoe Fire Protection District. The North Star Community Service District's Fire Department would likely be the lead agency for fire suppression, not North Tahoe Fire. North Tahoe Fire does maintain reciprocal mutual aid and automatic aid agreements with North Star and other surrounding fire agencies in the region. Therefore, we would assist North Star during a fire with resources when available. In addition, the district does operate a paramedic ambulance whose response area includes Highway 267 from Kings Beach to North Star Drive, and we are preparing to provide ambulance services for the project area from our closest station, 52 in Kings Beach, or we are prepared, we're not actively preparing, but. In our December 18, 2015 letter, the Fire District did submit comments during the draft environmental impact report review process related to our concerns. In summary, North Tahoe Fire Protection District Board and the Fire Chief have not taken a position on this project-specific plan or the subsequent projects that may be constructed if the Marne Valley West Parcel-Specific Plan is approved. And personally, thank you guys for having us, and I hope I get to meet a bunch of you, and I'm excited to be a part of this community. So thank you.
Welcome to your new position, then.
And I'm sorry, I can't, oh, thank you. I can't comment on anything, because this is on behalf of the chief, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Pete, Pete Todoroff? Pete, are you available, please? And then Shannon, you're up next.
And if I could just add again to the chair's comments, we're going to hold everybody to three minutes. So when you see that yellow light, you've got 30 seconds to wrap up, it's right in front of you on that, you'll see it.
Okay.
So you've got 30 seconds to wrap when you see that light, and we're, because of the, having 30 people that want to speak, we're, we are going to ask everybody to be brief, and also stick to the three subjects. If you get off on a rabbit trail, we're going to stop you. So just, that's a warning.
I'm calling.
Okay.
My name is Pete Todoroff. I've been a resident of Incline Village for 36 years, and I'm the chairman of the cab of Incline Village as well. My concerns are, I never heard anything mentioned about the campground. 760 residents and 6.6 acres of commercial, but not of anything about the campground. Now, I believe that's also included in this.
No, it's not. And I, we should have prefaced that anybody who wants to talk about the Brockway campground, we're not, that's not part of the three subjects that we're talking about today, that it's a separate project that will be dealt with at a future time. And so today, we're only dealing with this 760 units that are being requested, and that's it.
And like I said, I've been up here for 36 years, and Highway 267 and 28 going to Incline is a nightmare at best in the summertime, period. It is just no way that I can see how a fire happening in this community, there is going to be adequate evacuation for everybody. They need to show, I believe that they, the Highway Patrol should have something online where people could check and see how this evacuation, how to look at it and see what type of evacuation plan they have in case there is a fire. Something on the computer, or something on the news, or something. For me, it would be computers, because that's what I'm best for, but I think that they should have some sort of a plan that we could access online to see what type of evacuation, because as I see it now, it would be a catastrophe. Thank you.
Okay, you know, just, let me, let me, sir?
Yes.
Okay, there is an east side emergency evacuation plan that is available on the Placer County website. And so that is available for you to view.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shannon?
And thank you for not using your full three minutes, too.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Shannon Ekemire, lead to Save Lake Tahoe. I'd like to thank all of you for hosting the meeting here today. I think it's a perfect backdrop and good reminder of what you need to consider when making your decision today. I would like to point out some clarification on the presentations and staff reports that you received today, specifically the Tahoe programs. The Tahoe TMDL, the Transit TART update, if you've heard anything about that, and the current area plan are meant to look at the current existing conditions of Lake Tahoe and mitigate the problems that already exist today. The environmental review for this project and the explanations given today do not address the impacts as they relate to traffic, air quality, and water quality with increased vehicle miles traveled and drop of levels of service associated with this project. We have requested for that information time and time again, and have not been provided that. The mitigation measures cited today and in the environmental review are inadequate, stating that the project proponent will provide funding for some type of transit improvement and be part of some ad hoc committee are meaningless. We ask that you do not approve this project as proposed today as the environmental review does not meet sequel requirements, because the impacts of the lake were not addressed, and will set dangerous precedent if Placer County does approve this project as today as the public process has been cumbersome, and a vote for this project today would be a vote against the lake. Thank you.
Next up, we have Alexis Aller, Isaac Silverman, and David Blough. Alexis, Isaac, and David?
Good afternoon, commission members. Alexis Aller, Executive Director of Mountain Area Preservation. I also appreciate you hosting the meeting here in Kings Beach. As you can see, we do have crazy existing conditions with traffic, just with what we have today. I also appreciate you opening up public comment, as these are serious issues that deserve your full attention, and, and really, I think, more meaningful information than you've been presented with today. We have submitted extensive comments regarding the inadequate analysis contained in the draft EIR and the final EIR. Specifically for traffic and circulation, it's important to note that these numbers are grossly underestimated by 65%. The EIR assumes that there will only be 20% of full-time homeowners. That is completely inappropriate. The analysis needs to account for all units, 760, being consumed, and what those traffic numbers will actually look like. And I want to reiterate again to review our draft EIR letter, and our final EIR letter, and all of the subsequent letters where we continue to document how inappropriate the analysis has been. If the project is implemented at its scale, all intersections will go to a level of Service F, creating hazardous and unsafe driving conditions. Also, I've asked, we've asked that you visit the site, it's important to visit the site. The project entrance is off of 267, which also creates an additional hazard. It's at a steep grade on 267, which will not allow for a traffic signal or a roundabout. We've continued to note in letters that the project entrance will create a high hazard for side swipe collisions. There is no analysis of this in the final EIR. The proposed entrance cannot be allowed with existing conditions today on Highway 267. The EIR continues to use mitigation such as paying fees, or a hope that Caltrans in the county can widen 267 from the county line to Brockway. We can't count on hope. We need improvements in assurance today in order to make a decision, for you to make a decision. to make a decision. I want to note that Rich mentioned that there will be 20 million in traffic impact fees. I doubt that the entire county will use all of your traffic impact fees for one project. I sit on the traffic impact fee committee for the town of Truckee. We've identified almost $40 million worth of improvements just for the town of Truckee, and we don't have adequate funding for that. So I would really question the report Rich gave to you about the funding and the traffic impact projects and that there are no identified projects for Placer County. I appreciate Mr. Nader's comments on the funding and the fact that funding is not the solution. If we could buy our way out of traffic impacts, Tahoe would have done that a long time ago. It is a volume issue. Payment is not a solution. Once again, please send the applicants back to the drawing board. This project is overscaled and unmitigated, and frankly, the EIR would be illegal to approve. So please deny the project in front of you today. Thank you.
Isaac, Isaac?
Well, sorry to disappoint you. I'm not Isaac. My name's Tom Moors. I'll speak on behalf of Sierra Watch. Is that okay with Isaac? Thank you. Again, I'm Tom Moors. I'm here with Sierra Watch. We have a 15-year history working in the Tahoe Sierra, excuse me, working in the Tahoe Sierra to achieve effective conservation. I also want to thank you for taking the time to dive deeper into some of the important issues involved with this project. I think the three you've chosen today, traffic, Tahoe, and fire safety, each taken on their own, are so important to this region, to the health of this region, and even to the safety of its residents. So there are other issues, too, but I really appreciate the three you chose to dive into. And I'm going to focus a little bit, and very briefly, on issues of fire safety, which clearly has been a hot topic today. Unfortunately, the question of fire safety and of emergency evacuations involved with this project really aren't questions of coordination and communication, in spite of the best efforts, even the heroic efforts of uniformed professionals. What's before us really is a question of planning, and the issue at hand is an issue of physics. And it involves too much fire, too many cars, and not enough roads, not enough ways to get out. So if this project were built and there were a fire, what would happen? Under its own EIR, it indicates that it would take more than an hour, about an hour and a half, just to get off the property. And then what? Well, it'd be a matter of getting out of the fire and into the frying pan. Because if you get off the property, then you get on Highway 267. And as we've heard plenty and experienced ourselves, 267 is already a gridlock. What about the other route that would send you to the Fiber Board Freeway? Well, remember, the word freeway here is somewhat ironic. It's a very narrow, more like a trail than a road, certainly more like a trail than a freeway. And I know we're not supposed to talk about Brockway Campground, but that is an issue when you're talking about safety, because the exit route right now would go through that proposed development and its own tangle of new roads, campsites, and people trying to get out. So approval of this project would really be an example of not planning for a disaster, but planning a disaster. And I'll sum up just a last point that is really important to bring up. The big decisions in planning really are about entitlements and development rights. And I've heard at this hearing today and at the June session of this hearing, that there are no entitlements associated with this project, and there are no development rights. That is not true. And I think it's very important for everyone here, and you in particular, to know about the gravity of the decision you are making today. As spelled out in the development agreement, part of the staff report for your packet today, the development agreement establishes certain development rights for the property. In particular, the developers shall have a vested right to develop the West Parcel. And the county agrees that the county is granting and grants here with a fully vested entitlement. Those are rights and entitlements that do not exist for the oft-mentioned 1360. What they're asking for are new entitlements and new rights, and there's an attempt to pass the buck to future decision-making. But that responsibility is now, I don't envy you that responsibility. It's a big decision. But the responsibility right now is those entitlements before you. And on the issues of traffic, fire, and Tahoe, there's no reason why this project should be approved. We urge you to deny it. Thank you.
David, David Blau?
Thank you. Appreciate the commission taking additional testimony on these three topics. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Lead to Save Lake Tahoe, and I spoke last time briefly. I want to address just one of the three topics, which is impacts to the lake, a national treasure, as you all know. Sometimes, when I look at the massive EIR, I think the project is on another planet. It is not even related to the direct impacts to the lake. In the, in the, in the early part of the meeting, the environmental consultant talked about TMDLs. I don't think anybody in the audience probably even understands how TMDLs are set, how thresholds are set. It's a silly, a silly index to try to talk about in a public forum. I'm going to make it very simple. The, the traffic analysis of this project says that on a peak summer day, daily day, nearly 14,000 vehicle miles traveled would occur in the basin. 14,000. On, in terms of cars, you could say about 1,400 cars times the miles they would travel back and forth on the North Shore. Now, what is the significance of 14,000 vehicle miles traveled? Well, cars do two things to the lake. Number one is the emissions put nitrogen, NOx, in the atmosphere, which settles in the water. Okay? Nitrogen, cars, air quality, water quality. And number two, the cars crush the fine sediments on the roads, and those find their way into the lake. Both of these impacts create nutrient loading in the lake, which contributes to algae formation. Couldn't be any clearer that that cause and effect relationship. The mitigation proposed in the EIR is, as Shannon said, is kind of meaningless. To join a local membership in a transit agency is nothing. What should be committed to on a project of this magnitude is a specific financial commitment to transit-oriented mitigation on the proponent's part. And, and you're going to get tired of hearing the lead say this, because we're going to say this when Brockway Campground comes forward. We're going to say it about the 25-year development plan in SQUAD, and we're going to say it about the Placer County Area Plan. The mitigation measures have to be commensurate with the level of impacts, and it's not enough by law in SEQA to simply display and identify the significant impacts and then do virtually nothing about it. So I, I would say that as lead agency, the, the word lead really means something. And I would ask you on all these North Shore immediate outside the basin projects, I would ask you to take the word lead and think hard. It means to influence and shape the project, not just to pass the project through. Not just to pass the project through. One last point, if you pass this on to the Board of Supervisors, they are required to make a statement of overriding considerations. Now, if the military does an EIS, that might be national defense. I would ask you, what is the overriding consideration that would offset the level of significant adverse environmental impacts? What, what is that consideration other than money? Other than money. Thank you.
Next up, we have Judy Simon, John Sell, and Carolyn Pretzer. Judy Simon, John Sell, and Carolyn Pretzer?
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Simon. I live in Incline Village, and I would like to speak specifically to the Tahoe implications of what, what you're considering. First, why, why this development in this area? Because it's near Lake Tahoe. Otherwise, you know, you wouldn't be creating the, the traffic messes that, that we've heard described. You wouldn't be creating the fire hazards that, that are, been described. I'll associate myself with some of the other speakers and say this indeed is overscaled and undermitigated. Mitigation in this environment is very, very difficult. We know our forests are in distress. We know that traffic is increasing, and others have spoken. And I will reiterate that the problems with traffic just over this last weekend in our communities. I don't want to say anything else, just to say.
You don't have to.
I know I don't have to. I won't use my full three minutes. But why, why transfer things to the top of that ridge? It's not only unsightly, it's no doubt dangerous. And I urge you to reject this proposal.
John?
Thank you for accepting comments. My name is John Sell. I'm from Crystal Bay. Just two very quick things. First of all, I think this discussion of traffic seems silly to me, especially since I had difficulty getting here today. I parked on the edge of town, and seriously, it was quicker to get here just walking. I mean, it's a real issue. Secondly, I'm concerned with the effects of light pollution because of the increased traffic. This is a serious growing problem for the basin. It doesn't get the attention it should, and this would only add to the problem. It's, it's enough of a problem in urban settings. It's a real tragedy for this area. Thank you very much.
Carolyn?
I'm Carolyn Pretzer. I live in Tahoe Vista. Eight years ago, Turk, the Tahoe Environmental Research Center slash UC Davis, taught me that driving a car affects the lake. Other people have explained to you about the fine sediment. It's not what comes out of the pipe. It's what comes out of the, from underneath the tires. You've heard many people say the right thing. I commend you, the commission, for continuing that other meeting that I couldn't attend because I can't get to Grand Lebakan. I'm here representing some children and the residents of the Mobile Home Park on National Avenue. These people look up at the ridge past the Tahoe Vista Regional Park and say, is that where they're going to build stuff? And how do we get out? Please remember the number of senior citizens and others who don't subscribe to Placer Alert, who don't know how to get out and can't get out if there is a fire. Have any of you raised a hand, please, ridden over 267 recently on a bus? It's wonderful. That's how we get to the hospital now. So please, I beg you, deny.
Next up, we have Paul Batistas, Ben Kyler, and Robert Hines. Paul?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for coming up and having the meeting here. Much appreciated. My name's Paul Batistas. I'm VP of the Highlands Homeowner Association subdivision with a lot of full-time residents to the east of Tahoe City. And so I think my first point is just that this thing, decision you make affects everybody that lives on the North Shore, because there are only two way out, two ways out of this basin. So I want to talk about traffic and we'll talk about fire. But before that, I want to just ask all of you, I think something that everyone here is crying out for is straight talk, straight answers, real-world analysis of what's actually going on, not some ridiculous model. There are only two ways out of the basin. We all, the county staff love this project. They've said that. There's a lot of people here who obviously do not want the project. There are a lot of people who could not make this meeting who do not want the project. But all of those folks want straight talk, plain English, as to why it's a good thing or a bad thing. And I hope that you guys can carry that responsibility for all of us. So traffic, when you build this project, there's a number of projects already agreed and committed in, in Martis Valley. You've heard from CHP, traffic is a disaster already. You'll hear, you've heard and will hear, I'm sure, all of us that live it every day, including going over 267, it's already a disaster. So let's ask a straight and simple question. Will traffic get better or worse with this project? The answer is, it's going to get worse. And nothing that is proposed is going to make it better. Even if you go to two lanes on Brockway, you still got to get across the bridge to get onto 80, which is how people get out of here. So straight answers, until there's a plan for the traffic, a real plan that will really make a difference within the next three years, you can't really approve projects like this going forward, and that's going to apply to the campground as well. Fire, I'm terrified about fire. I've been terrified about fire ever since Angora and the stories that came out of that. And a lot of houses were lost, and thank God, nobody died. However, here on the North Shore, if there's a major forest fire, if there's a major incident, there will be problems. People have to get out, and they cannot get out already. And this project is going to, clearly, again, will it make it better or worse? Will it make it safer or less safe? It's going to make it worse for people trying to get out. It's going to make it less safe. You've heard your staff use words like marginal, marginal difference. So what's, what's a marginal difference? If a family of four dies and is burned to death while trying to exit, is that okay for this project? What if it's 100 people that burn and die to death? Is that okay? What if it's just one kid? What do we mean by marginal? What we mean is people are going to die when we have a major event. It's not if, it's when. You've heard the Fire Department clearly say, they don't have answers. I don't see how you can approve this project until there's a proper evacuation plan that will actually get everybody out, and that you can do your part by keeping the traffic down until that point, point in time comes, and at that point, it's appropriate to consider it. Thank you.
Ben?
Hi, my name is Ben Kyler. I grew up here in Kings Beach. I'm a longtime resident. I grew up going to Kings Beach Elementary School, went to North Tahoe Middle and High School, went on to college at University of Nevada Reno, and finished grad school at Sierra Nevada. Anyway, I just want to say my connection to Tahoe is strong, like many people here. And I will try to angle this from the traffic standpoint, because that is one of the things you've asked today. To put myself through school, I started to be a commercial driver. So between the time I got my commercial license in year 2000 and today, I have over 1 million commercial miles, mostly done around the Tahoe and Reno area. I also have driven for TART, so I've chained buses in snow. I've driven up and over 267 in snow with traffic, and stop-and-go traffic, and also on 3rd of July as well. So we all know how bad it can get, especially in a snowstorm. If you add more residences in and around Highway 267, you're making a huge mistake because we're just adding to the, to the inevitable gridlock and inevitable wrecks you're going to have on 267. And yes, they will involve fatalities, because as far as I understand it, Highway 267 on the Truckee side is one of the steepest, if not the steepest grades in California. They bring truck drivers, 267 to train their drivers on grades, so they can make sure they know how to use their air brakes correctly. If you add a stoplight between any part of the grade and Northstar Drive, you are going to add a recipe for disaster, because people who don't know how to drive in the snow, and we've all been around them, will be going up to Tahoe for the first time with or without chains on, and they're going to be trying to stop a stoplight for the first time in snow, and they might be piling to any one of us, and one of us might be driving a bus. And I hope that I never have to stop at that stoplight that might be proposed. But if I do, I just cross my heart and hope I can do it. Please don't pass this project, because I don't think many of the local residents want to see it. It's, it's bad news for a lot of us here. So thank you very much for your time.
Next up, I have Robert Hines. And then on deck is Sue Daniels and Kathy Mosby.
Thank you, members. My name is Robert Hines. I've been a resident of North Lake Tahoe for 19 years. Yesterday, I was in Safeway, and I walked by the news rack, and there was this magazine, American Scientific, and the issue is all about living with fire. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to make this a matter of official record. I'd like to give you a copy of it.
Could you, thank you.
It's, what I'd like to do is make a matter of, just, I'd like to read just a few excerpts from this article about living with fire in California. And one of the interesting things is the, a map in here by the California, let's see. And one of the interesting things is the, a map in here by the California, let's see, California Fire Hazard Severity Zones. And it shows the area immediately along 267 as a very high risk in the entire state of California. A few of the issues. Fire creates an illusion of being controllable. In dangerous locations, building codes and land use planning are established to make living there more survivable or to discourage building there in the first place. Even when data is collected and science is clear, impediments and intelligent policy stand in the way. Inevitably, there is pressure from developers to keep building despite disastrous outcomes, and elected officials are often unwilling to restrain construction or enforce stringent land use policies in a way that could curb economic growth. I heard a representative earlier from the forestry service, and it's interesting, they said that the U.S. Forestry Service between, from 1995 to 2015, the U.S. Forest Service has seen fire-related expense climb from 16% to more than 50% of its annual budget, with the projection climbing to 67% of their budget by 2025. Their current budget is $52 billion. They're spending more than half of that now just putting out fires. I have been in a 100,000-acre wildfire. I was in Southern California in 1970. I can tell you, nothing, when it comes to a wind-blown wildfire, goes according to plan. There, all it takes, all it would take on 267 is one wreck. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, there are going to be more aggressive drivers trying to pass slower drivers. And I know you don't want to talk about the campground, but if you have some RVs coming out of there with towing boats, all you need is one jackknife along 267 with a massive humanity behind it, and you're going to have a death zone. The bottom line is, please, read this article. It is based in facts substantiated. The bottom line is approving any of these developments along 267 is absolute insanity. I beg you to please reconsider and read the facts. Thank you.
I have Kathy Mosby, or, excuse me, Sue Daniels, then Kathy Mosby, please.
Thank you again for opening for public comment. I wanted to let you know that the passion of the people is definitely here, and we appreciate, I've been asked, some people need to leave, and if we could have people stand up that are still here that would be voting against this if they had your shoes. So if they could stand up. And hopefully that helps keep it quiet for you because I appreciate how hard it is to speak around that. Thank you. You will be asked to vote on overriding concerns for traffic. I know you've heard a lot about that today. And what I wanted to point out are just some simple math equations for you to think about. We had a speaker talk about the, or possibly E at this point. Without widening the road, and if you were to widen the road, it might go to a lesser amount, but they're not sure. So those are really indefinite definite numbers. But if you take 760 new homes, most homes come with two cars. Most of these homes will be vacation homes, but they'll be rented out. So we can assume they're going to be full most of the time. That would be 1,520 cars extra most of the time. And I know there's going to be a little variation to that. But when you add that to Tahoe and the fact that 70% of the lake's pollution is attributed to the roads, to the daily vehicle-driven miles and the TMDL, that's a lot of addition to the lake and with our traffic problems. Widening the road. We'd heard someone speak that we will have money possibly to widen the road. Well, Ben was right. This road is steeper than is allowed already. It is out of compliance already. I think the numbers that our representative spoke to widening this road are massively underestimated because you will have to dig the hillside down to create the proper grade to widen this road. It is out of compliance. And you also pointed out, there is actually no rule that would cause this mitigation money to stay with us. You can't make Caltrans do this. You can only ask them to. So at this point, I don't think you can honestly vote for this because you cannot mitigate this. Fire departments have talked, and so have our local highway patrol. We were talking about maybe an atomic bomb blowing off. But really, what could really happen is a large earthquake. That can break gas lines and cause fires, and you would have a mass evacuation. That is very probable because we do live in an earthquake zone. The other thing is, when you add humans, you add people. People cause fires. More people, more fires. So it is logical to expect that we will have more fires in the area. Thank you again for letting us all speak, and let's keep this off the ridge lines as the TRPA, League to Save Lake Tahoe, Mountain Area Preservation, and many of your other agencies have all asked and put into process.
Kathy?
Hi, thank you for your time. I wanted to just kind of point out, maybe it's obvious, I don't know, but July 3rd, that kind of was an evacuation. We got to see how it works. And I live up on Dolly Harden in Kings Beach. The fireworks ended around 10:00, and I had a line of cars trying to get over to 267 till at least 11:45. I finally went to bed. But that gives you a sense of how it works. And we're not talking smoke, fear, panic. That's just fireworks. A good time. So please consider that. Also, I'm not one to get involved. This is my first time in this, and I've lived here for 32 years because I assume you guys are smarter, you have experts, you know what you're doing. I don't. But then we had the debacle of the roundabouts in Kings Beach. I thought it was going to be okay because you guys knew what you were doing, but you got to admit, this is ridiculous. The traffic is, I don't even know how many, how much worse. Maybe three, four, five times worse. So we got to learn from our mistakes. I mean, your hearts were in the right place. I don't even know who voted on what because I don't pay attention because I like ignorance is bliss. But this one, this big thing that you're looking at, why are we even considering this? You know? I don't even, I put leaks on the table. It's just crazy. It's just crazy. And one more note, I've worked in the hospitality industry for about 20 years, and many times I hear, oh my God, we just discovered North Shore. We went to South Shore forever, and it's awful. The traffic, the congestion, we hate it. This is a charming, lovely place. It's not going to be charming lovely if we keep doing these things. And you know the TOT dollars. You guys know about that. So keep that in mind if it comes down to money. That's all I got. Thank you.
I have Jennifer Kwashnik, Susan Gerhart, and Ellie Waller. And for the record, when you stand before the podium, please restate your name, please.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. Jennifer Kwashnik for Friends of the West Shore. I also would like to thank you for continuing the hearing and inviting the additional information that we've been hearing today. I won't belabor a lot of the points that have been made about the three issues that we're all concerned about, but I think it's pretty obvious. You know, we have heard from the first responders, and they are concerned. They can't tell you not to do this project. That is your job. You are the ones with the land use authority. But I think it's pretty clear that we're very worried about the fire danger and about, you know, evacuation and traffic. I also want to correct the information about the evacuation plan, the east side plan. There's been references made to this as a sort of, quote, mitigation. This does not include Lake Tahoe. This is actually in the staff report that it does not include the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit. So again, that does not cover what's happening from Lake Tahoe. We've also detailed in our comments, the traffic analysis is deficient in numerous ways. It underestimates the traffic from the project. It underestimates the traffic in Tahoe. It also underestimates the traffic visiting other places in the Tahoe Basin. So yeah, we are talking about the North Tahoe region, but we're also talking about going along the west shore and throughout basically the entire basin. I was going to mention the issue of cars floating the lake, but that point has been covered about the NOCs getting into the water and causing the algae growth. And so I want to say with regards to the fire danger, again, in the record, our groups, among others, have put, included numerous information articles about the fire danger. We've seen a lot of this, just in California, articles, articles about the west. Severe fire danger, it's getting worse. We've heard from the Forest Service about the beetles, the drought. We're heading into a serious problem here, and we haven't figured out how to deal with it now. Also, when we keep adding to these, or building homes in forest land, we're taking away resources from actually fighting the fire. Now we have to put resources into getting in there and getting people out of the homes and focusing on that. We're putting the first responders in more danger. We also have submitted numerous reports and articles about how bad it is to be building in these areas. Again, this is not new information. A lot of this came out, of course, after the Angora fire, but we need to rethink where we're putting these things in terms of our land use. We've heard references to what was the holding capacity in the Modus Valley Community Plan. Well, maybe we should be focusing all the resources we spent on this on updating the community plan based on the existing conditions. So finally, I just want to say, we've talked about mitigation. What's in the EIR right now is completely inefficient or severely lacking. They haven't responded to comments. And in the end, you can't mitigate the loss of a human life. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Gerhart, and I live in Homewood. And we, Homewood Mountain Resort, cannot be built at this point because the law says, the judges say, that there isn't any evacuation plan for the west shore. And there isn't any evacuation plan for Lake Tahoe. So I'm not quite sure what you're talking about. And 48% of the people that come to Lake Tahoe or the surrounding areas like Squaw and North Star, they go to Emerald Bay. When I, in June, late June, last month, we had a fire, tail fire, the trail fire. And it went immediately up to the ridge in El Dorado and Placer County. We had dumping of retardant. It was July 2nd, it was 2% contained, and then it was 12% contained when they started really dumping the retardant. And they were able to control pushing it up over the ridge. That could be Modus Valley. Because what the fire does, and we didn't have a strong wind, but it goes immediately to the top of the ridge. It's also impossible to discuss a level of service anymore. In October, I can't remember the date, but October of 1915, they stopped doing level of service. Our governor, Brown, signed the SB 350 that says, level of service only creates more greenhouse gases by widening the roads, you put more cars on the road, and that makes it worse. So there's no more level of service. That took months before it was actually, he signed the law, but it took months to have it put into effect. And so you can't use level of service anymore because it already is in effect. January of 2016, it became law. So you can't talk about level of service. You need to know the facts outside of this tiny world that we live in in order to protect each other better. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you.
Good afternoon. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. Thank you for coming today and thank you for the opportunity for public comment. I'm going to truncate the comments that I sent you. You put a face to the name now. I've sent you hundreds and hundreds of pages of documentation. I read every page of these environmental documents. There's much confusion and angst about the fire protection and evacuation for this project and the basin in general. The Modus Valley West FDIR and Placer County must explain the process so the public understands that health and safety are sufficiently addressed and remove the fire districts from this currently politically-charged hotbed. They come to you. I thank North Tahoe Fire for coming today. I know North Star Service District is also addressing this through some of their comments. But to put this in perspective for people that don't understand, there is an agency called the Placer County, or Placer Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. There's a sphere of influence for those people that are in the audience that didn't get my comments, which was approved in October of 2014. The future cycle for this project has not been approved. So if it's not a North Star project, and the current North Star Community Service District agreement doesn't cover the real estate where Modus Valley West Parcel is proposed, and the North Tahoe Fire District are not the responsible agencies, then Lake Tahoe and Truckee residents are left with no committed fire protection and welfare of the constituents and visitors that might be coming to this project. That said, I know our fire departments will take care of us. Cal Fire, all of us are in this together. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem that the environmental document did not sufficiently address this. The proposal is urban sprawl and must be denied and not considered under the sphere of influence when it comes back for proposal under the North Star Service District. The North Tahoe Fire District should not be the will serve because this project will not provide the affordable housing, the efficient extended government services. It has too many significant and unavoidable impacts that are based upon local conditions and circumstances today that are on the ground with little to no mitigation. Specific citation, just for the people in the audience, so they understand that this municipal service district, the district will annex the territory for purposes of providing potable water service only. The agencies that provide other services to this zone, for example wastewater disposal, fire protection, and road maintenance, will continue to do so, and North Star Service District shall not be the responsible agency. The executive director or officer at LAFCO, Chris Berry, in a comment letter on September 3rd, stated that this parcel will be required to be annexed. I will close with the TMDL. It's a 60-year process. Most of us in here will be dead. Maybe TMDL should be total maximum daily load of people and projects in this basin and just outside it. Thank you.
I have Laurel Ames, Rick Stevens, and Patty Lamontto.
Thank you for listening to all these comments. I appreciate it. The Tahoe Area Sierra Club has commented. Laurel Ames, Tahoe Area Sierra Club. The Tahoe Area Sierra Club has committed, has commented on this project for the last two and a half years. We continue to find that there are violations of SEQA. We continue to find that there are issues that are dismissed because there's no reason. They're just dismissed. We have asked questions. We don't get our questions answered. We have been treated very badly by Placer County in this process. And this process is very interesting. It has not changed since the day it was produced. It hasn't changed. All of this effort, all of these people, all of this passion, all of this concern, all of the questions, all of the challenges, all of the documentation that's been submitted, nothing has changed. That is a very bad report on Placer County. And I'm sorry to say these things. It's very negative. But this is a huge project that's going to have a terrible impact on North Shore. Thank you.
My name is Rick Stevens. I live in the Placer County area of Truckee. On the 5th, not the 3rd, on the 5th of July, we got a good example of an evacuation. It wasn't for a fire. It was from the weekend. And the traffic was backed up for at least four hours from 80 to North Star, and I didn't want to get in it, so I don't know if it went up to Brockway Summit. So it was, it was, it took me, and I was driving down Schaefer Mill, trying just to go to the airport. It took me six lights, six lights in 20 minutes to cross 267. It was a, it was a traffic nightmare. A fire would be much worse. Solving the problem with four lanes, we don't want 267 to be four lanes. Truckee certainly doesn't, and I do not want 267 to be four lanes. The end. The entrance and exit to this project on that steep grade is a nightmare. And in the winter, it'll be a disaster for accidents, et cetera. And I just can't understand how that's even possible. The other thing, people are talking about the traffic studies saying that, well, maybe only 20% of the people will be occupied in these units. I don't think the traffic study accounted for VRBO. They are renting everything, and it's affecting housing in this place. There's lots of other things I'd like to say. I tried to stay on point. I urge you to disapprove this project.[639.38][639.38](APPLAUSE).
Patty? Hello. My name is Patty Lamontto, and I live in Martes Valley. I've lived in this area for 30 years now. I'm a native Californian, Northern California, and it breaks my heart to see what's going on. And the fact that I worked in government at the first part of my career, and I'm very disappointed that so many very key issues are being ignored and that the public's not being treated well. I do appreciate your opening this up to public comment today. I'm disappointed that it had to be considered. I'm not going to take a lot of time and add a lot of comments because I want to say that I urge you to not approve this document. I urge you also to take this very seriously. Wildfire is the number one risk in this area and has been. It's only growing worse and worse. Insurance companies come and go, but there's, the few that are willing to insure here are concerned, and it's going to be possible that if you continue to keep a plan like this, that you'll have residents that can't even get insurance any longer. So I wanted to, on what Rick just said about July 5th, I'm going to give this, it's photos of midday on the 5th of Highway 267 that a friend of mine, Anne Penfield, took. It shows the gridlock, and I'd like to just give it to Kathy. So once again, I hope that you'll take the comments that Sierra Watch and MAF and the League to Save Lake Tahoe have made, and please deny this project.[764.13][764.13](APPLAUSE).
All right. The next three speakers are Bob Lehman, Ron Grassi, Ann Hoffman.
Hi. My name's Bob Lehman. I live in Carnelian Bay. I'm the president of the Aggie Point Swim Club, and I'm here on behalf of 236 homeowner members who are overwhelmingly opposed to this project. I'd like to speak just a little bit about the traffic. It's a mess now. It's going to be worse. And one of the prior speakers wanted to talk a little bit about straight talk. You continued the last hearing because you hadn't heard from Caltrans and wanted to get some more input. I don't think you have. I read the staff report. I really didn't understand much about it. So the straight talk is Highway 267 is going to be a two-lane road from State Route 28 up to Rockaway Summit during our lock times. From Rockaway Summit to Old Rockaway Road, they're talking about someday possibly expanding it to four lanes. That's not going to happen anytime soon, and it's not going to happen during the penancy, the early years of this project. And then what good is it to widen that road when the bypass over, over the Truckee River is two lanes? It's not developed for four lanes. It's not going to be four lanes. I tried to find out on the internet, do a little research to figure out whether it was actually engineered to be expanded, and I couldn't find any information. Now, are they going to tear that down and build a four-lane road to get to the highway? I don't think so. And just a personal comment, my daughter had to go see an pediatrician at Tahoe Forest Hospital about a week ago. It took over an hour from Carnelian Bay to Truckee midday in the afternoon. We've got to get serious about this. There's really no reason for this project. There's no good reason to pass it. Someone might have property rights, but just because you have the right to do something doesn't mean you should do it. I urge you to deny this.[903.13][903.13](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Ron Grassi. Ron Grassi?
I think you left.
All right. I've got Ann Hoffman.
Good afternoon. I'm Ann Hoffman. I'm a full-time resident at Kings Beach. I appreciate your taking comments this afternoon, hotter than the other speakers, and giving the matters that you identified serious consideration because they are serious issues. And I'd really like people to think about the future of the Tahoe Basin and the fact that while we're here today about a particular project, the issue is really much bigger than that. The issue is what is the future of the Tahoe Basin? And is, are we going to be able to enjoy it in the way that we have, and will it retain its attributes that have made it a wonderful place for people to visit and for people to be? And this project is just emblematic of others that will come through the pike, and we're at a tipping point. There's very little more of this scale project. Really, there is no more of this scale development that can occur without turning this into a place that's very different than the place that it is today. I earned my living before. I was fortunate enough to be able to retire in Tulane Tahoe as a real estate developer. So I understand the dynamics, and I realize what a difficult situation this is for staff because you start out with a project, the whole idea of swapping entitlements from one area to another seems very logical. You start working in concert with the sponsoring party to see about bringing this about, a plan for swapping rights that seems to make sense. Time goes by. The conditions in which the project ultimately comes to approval are different from the conditions that were there on the table when you first started the dialogue many years ago. And so all of a sudden, there's an underlying condition that doesn't support the project in that you've been working hand in hand with the submitting entities for many years, and it feels like a betrayal to all of a sudden say, oops, you know what? We're really embarrassed that it doesn't work. But that is what you need to do because it really doesn't work.[1036.48][1036.48](APPLAUSE). And the only other thing I want to add is that if you look at, and I'm sure, I trust that you have, pages 29 and 30 of the EIR summarizes this traffic issue. And just to reiterate it, 267 and I-80 westbound, summer level of service D to E, winter peak hour level of service F. These are as a result of where the project's service level would be after the project. And it goes on and reiterates one, two, three, four, five other points of service, and every one is level of service F. When would it be, level of service is the bottom level of service. They don't measure any level of service worse than that. So under what condition would you deny a project? I mean, if, to have this be an unmitigated outcome and to approve the project makes the whole EIR process a travesty. So please consider that and please deny the project. Thank you very much.[1102.33][1102.33](APPLAUSE).
I have next Ellen Swenson, Heidi Bushway, and Kathleen Stevens. And please state your name when you get to the podium.
I'm Ellen Swenson. I'm a resident of Tahoe City and a Placer County taxpayer. Thank you for taking our comments today. We really appreciate it. Very shortly, I'll just make it very short. This meeting was supposed to be provide information to us on three areas, including Martes Valley West impact on Tahoe's water quality. I have some expertise in this area. I listen very hard to the environmental consultant, but for the life of me, it's still unclear to me what is the impact on Tahoe's water quality of the currently proposed Martes Valley West project. So it's a question. What is it? Are you, can you answer me?
We don't answer you.
So it's clear to me and everyone in this room that this answer has not been provided to the commission, and I just ask you, based on that, please deny. Thank you.[1167.75][1167.75](APPLAUSE).
Heidi? Are you here? Heidi Bushway? Kathleen Stevens?
Hi. Thank you for taking comments today. I'm Kathleen Stevens from Aggett Bay, and everyone has pretty much said everything, so I'm not sure what I can add. But it did take me last year, it was first week of August, and at 2:00 PM, I left Aggett Bay, and it took me 45 minutes to get to Kings Beach. I was on my way to pick someone up from the train station. So not, not a good situation. And there was no event. It was not the 4th of July, it, nothing. The other thing, and my, my concern is wildfires. They can move and they can travel very fast, and we have a few people who've talked about that. And what are you going to do when you have a lot of seniors that are trapped, people who can't get out, maybe they don't have cars? I was traveling at less than three miles, and it took me 45 minutes. So what are you going to do with a wildfire? People are panicky and they're crazy, and that's my concern. You have burn victims. It was just recently that someone died in, two seniors died in Southern California fire this year. Children, if you've ever taken care of a burn victim and trying to change their Band-Aids because you have to change them regularly so they don't get infected, it's not pleasant, and it's a horrible thing. And I hope that all of you have the integrity and think about that. It could be your grandchild, your, one of your relatives, or a close friend, and a neighbor. And please deny this project. It's not appropriate for the location. Maybe having it in Southern California would be better. Thank you.[1283.91][1283.91](APPLAUSE).
Dan Egenberger, Sylvia Finley, and Dana Morell Spencer.
Hi. My name is Sylvia Finley. I am a Soda Springs resident, and I work here in Kings Beach. I am not unique. I commute about 30 minutes a day, and I think it's fairly unrealistic to expect me in a mass casualty incident to reach my family in a timely manner. I also am a former first responder. I was an EMT for two years, and I served in the Coast Guard for six years. So I understand mass casualty incidents. In a simulated mass casualty incident, people are scared. There are language barriers. There are cultural barriers. Here in Kings Beach, 46% of the population is a minority population. We also have seniors. We also have children. This is a poverty pocket, so there are people without transportation. There is no evacuation plan in place for people without transportation, both here in Kings Beach and in Tahoe. I also wanted to address weather. So it's fairly realistic. Many people have said it. To expect a wildfire, there's also snowstorms. With snowstorms, there's also people in the ski resort areas without transportation, J-1 workers, ski resort workers. How are these people expected to evacuate? Are we accounting for the loss of life or potentially, you know, their injuries? I don't think that's been accounted for. So those are my points. Thank you.[1373.91][1373.91](APPLAUSE).
And Dana Morell Spencer? Danielle Hughes? Jacob Rittenhour?
Hi. Thank you. My name's Danielle Hughes, and I'm a Carnelian Bay resident, and I am a volunteer for the Fire Adapted Communities Program. I work with several of the agencies up here and actually do quite a bit of research on fire. That's my main concern here, is that you're really looking from a cumulative aspect, the effects of the fire. If you, when you leave today, if you head out towards Tahoe Vista and that area, if you look up the hillside, there's a significant amount of trees that have recently died this year that are red. While we are actually in a, currently in a better situation than several other areas which, where they're expecting 90% of the trees to be dead by the end of the summer, there's been a significant change here. Placer County is not currently in the, in the program to evaluate the mortality risk program. El Dorado County recently has joined that. We should actually be considering that. But actually bringing some of these communities to some of these areas is actually going to have a significant impact on fire and potential evacuation routes. I'm a mother, and I actually, my child goes to school in Tahoe City. I've actually looked at our evacuation maps and tried to actually develop my own program to get my child, if he's in school, if he's at his father's house downtown in Tahoe. So the traffic issues to get to people, I'm not going to leave my child if there's a fire. If someone tries to get me to go out a different direction, I'm not going to do that. So, you know, just kind of think about how we have to adapt and have to get through the system as you bring in all these new communities into our area. Thank you.[1496.11][1496.11](APPLAUSE).
Good afternoon. I'm Dana Morell Spencer. I live in Carnelian Bay. The three issues that were going to be readdressed, I feel they were not really addressed clearly. There was no new information. Caltrans wasn't here. The, some of the fire agencies weren't here representing things. There was no new info at all on the impact to Tahoe. I have my own evacuation plan because I know getting to the grocery store is gridlock. So I am planning to just walk down to the lake and hope for the best because I do not want to see my family, my friends, and everyone else burn in their car if we tried to evacuate this area with the limited access that we have. So I feel that approving this project would sort of be akin to a death sentence for not only myself and many of the citizens and visitors, but Tahoe because the impacts are huge. So please do deny this project, and we thank you for your time.[1561.28][1561.28](APPLAUSE).
Is there a Jacob Rittenhour? I have Stacy Bordas, Ann Nichols, and last, Gail Penny. Stacy, Ann, Gail? Okay. Thank you.
Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. Couple of things. First of all, this is not an allowed use. It's forest conservation land that they want to rezone to residential and commercial. So that's not good. Anyway, and then the other thing is, as a friend of mine said, 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. That's what we're trying to do again. And this justification of comparing projects to the 8,600 units that could be built in the Martes Valley Community Plan, that plan is outdated, and I don't know what they were smoking when they did it because we're already at max. So we really need to redo the plan and not use that as a benchmark to justify development because it's an error. Thank you.[1634.51][1634.51](APPLAUSE).
The last name I have is Gail Penny. Sarah Gail Penny?
Hi. I'm Gail Penny, and thank you, members of the board, for allowing us to speak today. I live up Old County Road, right outside of Tahoe City. I'm really concerned and want to address the fire safety issue again. California is known as a burn state. There's fires. I don't need to explain that. It's high chaperone. We live in a forested area with dense fuel. There was a controlled burn that got out of control back in 99. I'm just making some points here. I don't speak eloquently, but this is an accident waiting to happen. It's just a question of when it is going to happen. I want to say thank you to the Highway Patrol. I don't know if they're still here. The Sheriff Department and the Forest Service. About five or six years back, I worked on a crisis intervention committee with the Sheriff Department at Tahoe Lake School, and we, our main concern was getting the students out of the area and having the parents pick them up without major catastrophe happening. It was really frightening. And you take 300 students at the elementary school and about 1,000 students, give or take, and the high school only had one exit. And that's a question, okay? We have three main arteries in the North Shore. Highway 267 has already been discussed. It's a nightmare. Highway 89 and 431. People panic in a situation. About five or six years back, I worked on a Crisis Intervention Committee with the Sheriff Department at Tahoe Lake School. And we, our main concern was getting the students out of the area and having the parents pick them up without major catastrophe happening. It was really frightening. And you take three hundred students at the elementary school and about a thousand students, give or take, and the high school only had one exit. And that's a question, okay? We have three main arteries in the North Shore. Highway two sixty-seven has already been discussed. It's a nightmare. Highway eighty-nine and four thirty-one. People panic in a situation. If anybody's ever noticed, when you're driving in Tahoe City or Kings Beach and the fire personnel is trying to get by, people don't pull over in that situation. Now, let's talk about a crisis or an emergency situation? Hello? Let's add tourists to the situation that don't even know the area. They're gonna panic. They don't know how to get out. I really liked the fact that was pointed out that one-way roads. I think that's a good idea 'cause I didn't even think of that. But like I said, how are fire personnel gonna get through to assist people in a congested road? How do they get through? I actually timed, we were talking about the Fiber Board Freeway, and I live up Old County Road and Fulton Crescent goes right into the forest. And I just wanted to time how long it took for me to get on the back road there over to two sixty-seven. It took twenty minutes. There are several forks, and I happened to choose the right fork, and I wasn't in a panic situation. Is that my three minutes?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Okay. One more, just one more thing. What about smoke inhalation? Fires create their own weather pattern. And then, really quickly, there was an Escondido fire, and they evacuated the neighborhood. And my niece was on the road with two babies, and it came to an exact, just a stop. There was no way to move. So, I really wanna deny this Marthis Valley and for the safety of the people in the area. Thank you.
We have one additional name that came in for Michael Garabedian, please. And please state your name at the podium.
Michael Garabedian, Friends of the North work, and American River Group, that's where we're based. And I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's important that we, when you're hiring people to work on fire issues, you make sure that they have people that have gone to the annual Wildland Urban Interface Conference and that they know about fire ignition and the basics of planning when you're anticipating where to put subdivisions and how to, how to design them. That's my main comment. But I wanna point out that that, the Wildland Urban Interface, people can just look up WUI, W-U-I, on the internet. It's been every March in Reno, put on by the International Association of Fire Chiefs. People here should go to that, and your staff should go to that, and the people you contract should be sure to know those issues, which it's not evident that they do. Thank you.
We have one more speaker, Leah Kaufman, please.
My name is Leah Kaufman. Thank you for letting me speak at the last minute. I've been a land use planner in the Tahoe Basin for a really long time, over thirty years, and I believe in good planning projects that make sense. I don't understand how we've gotten this far with so little support, with the only advocacy is the Placer County Planning Staff. We elect our officials to represent us. We are told our opinions matter. We show up. Do we really matter? In the old days, Larry will remember, and Laurel Ames, TRPA and other agencies did not approve projects with this type of controversy. They sent us out in the holl to work it out. I was, um, working on the Kings Beach Safely, and that was a little bit controversial. And I was afraid of the league at that time, but we sat down and worked out a good project, I think. We have advocacy groups that were once for the project that are now opposed. Our first responders have concerns. We have to make overriding concerns for traffic. We have flawed assumptions. We don't understand occupancy of these units. We don't understand if two sixty-seven will be four lanes or two lanes. We don't understand the level of service. There's mass confusion on evacuation and build-out. And the numbers for the Marthis Valley, eighty-six hundred, forty-three hundred, thirteen hundred, seven hundred and sixty. I'm confused, and I don't feel that the concerns of these people have been adequately addressed and the environmental documents have been adequately mitigated and vetted. So, I would urge you, go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Sheri, Sheri Guzzi?
Hello, thank you for taking public comments again. My name is Sheri Guzzi. I've lived in Carnelian Bay for thirty-five years. I wanted to address all three things. I didn't hear any new information to any of the three areas when they talked about the impact of Tahoe. It was stated that there was none because the project site slopes to the north, but then the person just listed mitigation measures that are already in effect in the Tahoe Basin for some reason, since there's not gonna be any effect in the Tahoe Basin. But these are only existing development measures that are in place now and do not consider new development. Regarding Caltrans, there was also no new information. It was stated that, quote, "You can call Caltrans with any specific questions." And different platitudes about the competency of the staff, which I'm sure are true, does not equal information. There were no useful facts upon which to base an informed decision. And regarding the fire and emergencies, again, no new information. Per the California Highway Patrol and many other people here, we already know the existing roads are non-functional and already outdated, and therefore cannot possibly support additional traffic safely, and especially with an exit with steep grays on both directions. And as the Forest Service stated, the forest is already stressed and it's getting worse, and all the fire departments say it's not if, but when the Tahoe Basin will have a major fire, and this will be a disaster. So, please, I don't see that there's any new information that you requested, and therefore the project should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. I'm gonna ask the proponent of the project if they would like to respond briefly to the three areas that we asked for additional information on. You've heard our staff and heard the comments from the public, so if you could keep your comments on those three items, too.
I will do that, and I'm gonna limit myself to just simply correcting some statements that perhaps were incorrectly stated.
And your name for the record, again?
My name is Whit Manley. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
This is a combined conservation and development project. That is what it is. It represents a shift of density to a spot that makes a lot more sense and a reduction in density at the same time. The current policy of the Marthis Valley Community Plan, adopted by the Board of Supervisors that this commission is charged to implement, authorizes thirteen hundred and sixty residential units. We're taking those units and moving them to a better place and reducing the number of units by six hundred. There's been a statement that somehow zoning isn't real. That's not true. It's an expression of land use policy, and it's perfectly appropriate that this commission and the county as a whole take into account that policy unless and until it changes. We actually are proposing to change it. That's the recommendation that we'd like you to give to the Board of Supervisors. We're making that policy better. We're reducing the number of units and moving the development to a better place. And the fact is, this is a keystone east side of State Route two sixty-seven to the preservation of ultimately fifty thousand acres of land that will never be developed. I realize no one has focused on that, but it is an aspect of the project, a fundamental one. There is an interest in this room amongst folks to not authorize any additional development that adds cars to State Route two sixty-seven. Another word for that would be a moratorium on development. They are welcome. That is a striking thing to do, a very striking thing to do, to simply dispense with and ignore existing policy that has been in place for some time. And two, take away property rights that people have. All people, not just this applicant, but all people.
Can we, can we, let me interrupt you again. Can we, can we be respectful for him? He's got, I asked him to be brief, and hopefully he will be. And, you know, I let you guys speak and you clapped, and I didn't say too much today. So, just if you could just offer a little courtesy, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'll add, to those who are opponents of this, you're not adding to your cause by voicing what you're doing. That doesn't influence this commission in a positive way.
Thank you, I appreciate that. There was some discussion at the outset of what the carrying capacity of the Marthis Valley Community Plan is, and I just want to address that briefly. I'm not going to give you a blizzard of numbers, other than to note this. The Marthis Valley Community Plan is adopted in two thousand and three, envisioned eighty-three hundred residential units for the Marthis Valley Community Plan area. The area has actually built out at a pace that is significantly less than that. Roughly sixty-five percent of the carrying capacity, if you will, is what is actually happening on the ground. Marthis Camp, La Honton, North Star Highlands, they're all developing at somewhat less density than what was envisioned by the Marthis Valley Community Plan. This project is proposing to reduce the carrying capacity, if you will, from thirteen hundred and sixty to seven hundred and sixty. Under the specific plan, seven hundred and sixty is the maximum. When it actually comes time to do parcel maps, it may very well be that the number of units is less than that. It will not be more. So, the overall trend is towards reducing the overall number of units. I also wanna note that if you look at the Marthis Valley Community Plan, this is really the last piece of land for which a specific plan might be appropriate. Virtually all the other land has been planned, approved under the Marthis Valley Community Plan, with the exception of Waddell Ranch, which was bought by conservation organizations way back in the mid-two thousands. So, that allocation, if you will, went from twelve hundred to zero. That won't be developed because it was purchased. Okay, a couple of notes. On the evacuation plan, we've heard from emergency service providers, they are logically concerned that anytime you add one additional house, one additional car to State Route two sixty-seven, it makes things incrementally that much more challenging to handle. They did not oppose this project. They did not say that this was a tipping point. They said that they could manage the situation. That is what they said, not what I'm saying. Now, I'm sure that their druthers would be that we have no houses up here and that the evacuation problem entirely go away. That's obviously not the reality. There's an evacuation challenge today. Let's be honest, this project will make it a tiny bit worse. It will make it worse incrementally. That isn't to dismiss the fire issue, it is an important one. A couple of points about traffic. The level of service calculations that you've been provided relate to travel time, the amount of time it takes to go from point A to point B. This is from the traffic study. The incremental travel time during the average peak period under the traffic study to go from Kings Beach to I-80 will increase by about thirty-six seconds as a result of this project. That's from the traffic study. That is to say that this will make things incrementally worse by a little over half a minute. That's the reality. That's what the traffic study says. There was a statement that it would take ninety minutes for this project to evacuate, to dump the residents of this site onto State Route two sixty-seven. That's actually a misstatement. The study indicates that it would take ninety minutes for the residents to get to the airport, which would be a safe staging area for them. So, it's ninety minutes to the airport, not even, not ninety minutes to get to the entrance to the project. That's what the study says. There is a statement, or there were a number of statements, encouraging transit use and seeking mitigation to encourage transit use. This project has to do an upfront fee and an annual fee to support regional transit, both through the development agreement and a mitigation measure that is part of what's recommended before you today. So, we do encourage transit use, and we do wanna support it. There's been a concern that somehow State Route two sixty-seven, if it's widened to four lanes, will create a bottleneck at the town of Truckee town limit because they don't intend to widen the road. Actually, they just updated their traffic impact fee program, and it includes money to widen State Route two sixty-seven all the way up to Brockway. And at that point, there are a couple of different roadways to go north from there. The bypass across the Truckee River, that's designed for two lanes. That would not get widened to four. But it would be widened to four lanes all the way up to Brockway. So, they have the same kind of fee program and capital improvement program in place to widen State two sixty-seven, State Route two sixty-seven, that the county has had in place since two thousand and three, and we will pay that fee. The increased VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, in the Tahoe Basin on a peak day associated with this project is thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five vehicle miles traveled. There was a, there have been a number of statements that somehow the EIR doesn't look at the impacts on the Tahoe Basin. That's what that information is. It's the vehicle miles traveled associated with this project on a peak travel day, one of the, one of the more congested days in the region. And the conclusion is that that is not a significant increase. That's what the analysis says. But to say that that issue wasn't looked at isn't accurate. It was looked at. There has been some misstatements about how the traffic study assumed the number of vehicles that would be generated by the project. The traffic study assumes that these units, the residential units, will be twenty percent full-time residents and eighty percent transit residents. So, eighty percent not full-time occupied. That's actually a higher percentage of full-time residents than the data indicates on other similar projects in the area. The actual number is around ten percent. So, this study is actually somewhat conservative by bumping up the number of full-time residents. That does not mean that no cars are coming from the transit units. There is a trip generation rate associated with transit units every day, and that's what the traffic study is premised on. So, there isn't some sort of effort to minimize the trips that will be generated. In fact, trips are assigned to all seven hundred and sixty units, and that's what the traffic study was premised upon. We are paying for area transit. We are paying traffic impact fees. If State Route two sixty-seven is widened to four lanes, those will resolve the level of service problems on State Route two sixty-seven. The significant and unavoidable effects are associated with the possibility that it doesn't get widened. If it doesn't get widened, there will be certain intersections that don't operate in an acceptable level of service. And that's why they were flagged, because Caltrans is the entity that will decide whether and when State Route two sixty-seven gets widened. We're contributing our fair share, that's recognized appropriate sequoet mitigation. And so, that'll be up to Caltrans to decide whether and how to deploy that money. You've heard from staff, you've heard from emergency first responders, you've heard from the Department of Public Works. It would be lovely if Caltrans were here. They decided not to attend, so be it. The questions that you asked at the end of the last hearing have been addressed. We would recommend and encourage the planning commission to make a recommendation. We hope it's in support, but in any event, this is a project that because of that shift of density from the east to the west and the rezone associated with it, does need to go to the Board of Supervisors in any event. They need and deserve your recommendation, and we hope that you provide it to them, and we hope you do that today. We also hope that you recommend certification of the EIR. I recognize full well that a lot of people in this room don't like that analysis, and some people said that it was legally inadequate. That's part and parcel of these sorts of hearings when there is opposition. That's what people say. In my view, this was solid EIR, comprehensive EIR. It deserves a recommendation of certification regardless of how you feel about the project. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, Whit, I, I'm sure I, like the rest of the commission, received a communication, I think it was email, from the Conservation Group that had originally contracted with the project. And best I could tell, they denied that they are moving forward with that. And I, and if that's the case, that's, that's a killer to lose that. if that's the case, that's, that's a killer to lose that. And I, and I suppose, since you're the distinguished counsel for the applicant, that you're going to have a comment on that, but I, I, somehow that's got to be resolved, and I'm not sure whether it's better to, it's got to be resolved before we go very far, because that's the, for me at least, it's the nut of the, of the project, and it's too bad that it's turned out that way, but I, I'm sure you've got some comment on it next, but I'd like to get.
I would like to. There was originally an agreement with the Mountain Area Preservation and Sierra Watch, in which the framework was established whereby we would go forward with a project on the west side of State Route 267, reduce the density to 700 units, and lock up all that land on the east side of State Route 267. That was an agreement amongst us, and they in turn would agree that that was an appropriate thing to do, that they would support. In the fulness of time, they have walked away from that support, that's their prerogative. It's, they've made their opposition abundantly clear. I regret that, but that's their decision to make. The key issue, in my view, for this commission is not whether that agreement has or has not fallen apart, it is, would the county, by approving this application, realize the benefits that were envisioned when that agreement was first put into place? And in particular, would all that land east of State Route 267 be locked up? The development agreement before you would accomplish that, regardless of what happens with Sierra Watch, Mountain Area Preservation, or anybody else. That land would be locked up, and it would be locked up as a result of the development agreement and the commitments that would be made by the applicant. And there's nothing contingent about that. If this project is approved, that will happen.
Okay, is there any other comments from staff, that staff would like to make, or, or our county council at this time? None? None, okay.
Actually, when you're ready, we'll start walking through, I'm going to suggest we walk through each one of the recommended actions and do them separately when you're ready. Otherwise, I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, you have any additional comments or questions before we start the process?
I do, in terms of the entrance of the project, and heard several concerns about the entrance and exit being on a grade, and so if I could, from engineering, have staff assessment of, of the county's view of that entrance and exit onto Highway 267.
Tom?
Oh, sorry. If you could just repeat one more time, I'm sorry, the question?
Well, there were several comments about the entrance and exit of the project onto Highway 267, and it seemed to be related to the grade, I don't know if it was site distance, or what, but anyway, obviously, I think engineering has taken a pretty good look at that, so I just wanted, wanted to know what your assessment is.
Well, it has been analyzed in the EIR, and reviewed for site distance, and it is the existing roadway, and, you know, as far as, as this project, it's been looked at in the EIR, and we've determined that the analysis is appropriate.
Yeah, I was just really, I guess...
I'm going to let Stacy sit in as well.
If I can, if I can interject.
Yeah, help me a little bit more than just that it's appropriate.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just getting there. Sorry, give me one second. Yeah, let's see here. So with, with the, oh, sorry, I just found it too, so sorry, go ahead.
Do you want me to take a, take a shot at this? Again, Richard Moore, Ed with Public Works. The, the intersection itself is designed, I did hear someone come up and say if you put a signal there, you're going to have these rear-end accidents, there's not a signal proposed at this location because of the grade. There is a left turn pocket, there's an acceleration lane and refuge area being proposed as part of the project, and ultimately, it will be, it's a Caltrans facility, so they have to buy off on that design for the safety of that design. So there's the dedicated left turn lane, refuge acceleration lane proposed, but there is no signalization. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's what's proposed as part of the project.
I think it does, I mean, you're talking about the acceleration and a safety area in the center of the road.
That's right, so you have the left turn lane coming in, if you were exiting, you have a refuge area to turn into and sit in as you start back downhill, yeah.
Okay.
You'll be able to come out and turn both directions?
Yes.
Okay, I think that answers, answered it for me, thank you. Let me see, one more question if I could, too. Let me see, is the microphone on? Okay. Some people brought up TMDL. Some people brought up the word TMDL, and how it is or isn't adequate measurement technique, and there's reference to 60 years, and it's, you know, TMDL is a little bit confusing to me, too, so maybe if we could get a little bit more detail about TMDL. I know I did read in the document, I think, that additional traffic was not going to increase it above what the level is required, but a little bit of help on that word would be good.
Hello, my name is Sydney Coatsworth with Ascent Environmental. Yes, a little more information on the TMDL. Lake Tahoe is an outstanding national resource water, and it is an impaired water body, it's 303 D-listed under the Clean Water Act for nutrients, for nitrogen, phosphorus, and for fine sediment. With an impaired water body, the EPA requires preparation of a total maximum daily load, a TMDL, which will apportion amongst the jurisdictions around the lake a certain load that they are, that they must stay under to, to achieve the, the goals of the TMDL. So the TMDL was adopted by EPA and La Honton and NDEP in 2012. Loads have been apportioned, and the agencies are in the process of implementing all of the, the features that will address those issues. The inputs to the lake of nitrogen, phosphorus, and fine sediment are from, are from roadway abrasives that get crushed by tires, which is the, the whole issue of, of traffic and VMT in the basin, overuse of, of fertilizers, urban runoff, a variety of, of sources of these pollutants into the lake. It has been noted, several people mentioned, that vehicle emissions, particularly nitrogen oxides, are a source of that material into the lake. Much of that material does come in from out of the basin, even from the Bay Area, from the Central Valley, and, and they are able to map some of these species of nitrogen, and even determine where they, where they are from. The project does generate cars. It does generate cars that will drive into the basin. Those cars do have emissions, and some of those emissions are, are nitrogen oxides. So the point is that the, it was mentioned that the project will generate 13,745 VMT on a peak summer day. For perspective, this represents about seven tenths of a percent of the VMT in the basin. So the key, the key obligation to reduce pollutants to the lake from these emissions are to, to reduce, reduce vehicle miles. And in that, it's mitigation measure 10-5 would generate a source of income for transit projects that are, that are targeted to reduce VMT.
Is there a timeline for these organizations to meet these guidelines that were established in 2012?
I, I am not an, an expert on the, on the TMDL, but I, I think that there has been some very detailed modeling done, that, that with these pollutant loads that were established, it is a very long timeframe to achieve the, the clarity standard for which the TMDL was prepared. And it may be on the order of 60 years.
And if I understood you correctly, this project is generating seven tenths of eight percent?
That's on a peak, yeah, on a peak summer day, just for, for perspective. As Fran mentioned in her presentation, it's not possible to equate a, a certain number of vehicle miles and, and nitrogen emissions to, to an exact change in, in lake clarity. What has been identified in the TMDL are a universe of, of, of operational and, and management programs to address the problem, including, including BMPs for roadway runoff, BMPs for, for surface waters that go through disturbed areas that pick up, pick up pollutants, and to reduce vehicle miles, miles traveled.
Just a question plus that, on, just a clarification, the, a number was given for the entire basin? Do you have the number for Placer County? What we, would that 1% of the basin, would that be 10% of our Placer County? Or how's that work?
You know, I don't have that number, and I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if we, we could get that. The, the number that we're talking about is a, is a, is a TRPA, environmental threshold carrying capacity for that peak summer day as a, as a surrogate for, for vehicle trips generally.
But we don't know what it is for us.
No, I don't. Thank you.
No, we've closed. We've closed the public hearing. Go ahead, Wayne.
I think I mentioned at the last meeting, I served on a board of a fire district for many years, so fire is a real predominant issue to me, and, you know, nothing can be higher than the concern of life safety. And I'm really disappointed that we didn't hear from more of the, the fire agencies in the area, because we really need to understand the level of risk. I mean, I approached this trying to be as objective as I could, and I mentioned, I spent a lot of time on the phone over the last, you know, since June 9th, since we got together, to discuss this the first time I ran, and spent time with, as I said, the CHP and some of the other emergency responders, and I spent a lot of time on the phone with, with Cal Fire up in this area, and, and including the battalion chief for Cal Fire that represents taking care of this whole area. And they're, they were kind of uncomfortable, and it's maybe this, the other agencies of getting involved politically on making comments. I appreciated how far the CHP went in their comments, I mean, I really wanted to get their honest feedback. But I can tell you that the comments that I got from Cal Fire expressed a great deal of concern for the situation as it is today, and, and the ability to protect the people adequately now. And so I just, again, continue to want to say that fire, to me, is a critical issue. I'm not anti-development, I am concerned when we can't adequately address mitigation issues to, again, protect, especially of life, the safety of life. So I'm just passing that along.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
I just have one.
Go ahead.
Just one question for the rest of you guys. Overriding, could I hear from Jeff? What's overriding? Well, when you're talking about, you know, if you're going to rezone, you have to be an overriding concern or something like that, what, what would we think of as an overriding concern to go over against something that's unmitigatable? When I was asking, I'm asking us, because we're making the decision, they're all giving, give us information, we make the call. I'm just wondering for us, for me, I don't find one. I don't find an overriding one. I'm just asking the rest of you guys how you feel on that issue, not on entry fees, or on traffic or fire, just the overriding thing when we're, you know, zoning. You've got an unmitigatable situation, we can't do anything about it, either traffic, fire, or whatever, and we're going to override that, and I'm wondering why? What's going to make us do that? I mean, if it was a benefit to the community or the state or something, I'm, I'm just curious what the rest of you guys feel about that.
I think with, with regards to traffic, the county has a policy in place that says when improvement can't be made prior to development, that fees can be paid to, to offset that, to override that into a fee. It's not my program, it is the program. That is, that is, is how it's been, it does mitigate it today, but today, if the project is approved, there isn't, there isn't a home built yet either. And it will be a substantial amount of time before sticks would be approved to go in the air. There's, there's a lot more planning mapping, there's a lot more will serves from these fire agencies and stuff that still need to be, be had prior to a building permit for a home being issued.
Okay, so you're saying is basically that the project itself lends itself to an overriding of an unmitigatable circumstance?
I'm saying that the county has mitigation plans in place.
Well, we, we make the call on if mitigation plans are actually going to work. I mean, we're the ones who have to say yes, if we think it'll do it, or no, we don't think it will. And I'm just looking for the gut feeling on it, good.
I think you gave it to you.
Okay, anybody else? I mean, I wasn't asking Jeff especially, I mean, I was just trying to work my way down the table here.
We're going to get a, going to, going to comment, not all of us.
I was trying.
Partly, I guess it's partly the same question. My, my, one of my concerns, and, and we asked it last time, was the, well, all the other issues, that Lake Tahoe is a beautiful place, I haven't camped there for a little while, I used to when the kids were smaller, but, and of course, the fire issue is a whole other issue, I have a fire captain down in, in the Elk Grove area as a son. But this business with 267, and while we have some money up there on the board when it was up there, there's actually no plan. I know, I'm, I'm from the city of Roseville, and we have mitigation similar to the county, we all have kind of similar wording, but, and we have a lot of roads, and we have a lot of traffic in Roseville, and we have 130,000 people, and I've lived there all my life, so I've seen a change, and some of it, you know, has, has been beneficial, obviously we have the mall down there and everything else, the shop, but, and some of it has been a little bit traumatic for someone that came from a smaller community like I, when it was when I grew up. But we always had, at least, not always, but I, I, my impression is that we've had plans on the ground, or on the drawing board, or, or something that was a little bit more than, well, we don't have, we don't have a project yet. You know, we might have the money in the bank, but we don't have a project. But 267 does concern me. Not, not even the widening, maybe if we had a, a transit system that was already funded and, and up and running, like the governor wants us all to get rid of our cars, which is fine and dandy, but I still need my one in a while. But, but those, I don't see those things in the plan. I don't see the, well, they're in the plan, but I don't see how they're going to get built anytime soon. That's one of my biggest concerns, because the, the traffic is, and, but it's also involves the, the fire evacuation, so that's, that comes, they're kind of linked together.
Wayne?
I have a little different take on it. Most of you who spoke here, and spoke eloquently, and, and to the point, I appreciate that very much. But most of you were speaking to issues that already exist, and in some form and fashion, all of you are responsible for those issues. You moved here. You generate traffic, you generate some of those problems. What you're asking us to do, and I think it's a legitimate question, is where do we draw the line in the sand? When is it enough? I think, I think that's the, that's the tipping point for me, is, is, I, I, you know, I listened to all of your concerns, but most of them were not relative to this project, they were relative to what's already happened. I think what you're asking us is where's that, where is that line in the sand? For me, I think we're kind of getting there. I know you didn't like the first part.
Well, I, I would suggest to the commission, unless there's others that want to comment, maybe we could just kind of test this by going through the various categories that we need to make a decision on. And could I ask staff to put that up, so we could start working our way through it?
You know, you kind of maybe jumped a little bit there.
Yeah, if you've, if you've got something I said, I qualify that by saying if there's no more comments, let's get to it, let's make our decision.
Yeah, I can appreciate all the thoughts and comments that people had today. I will say I have a pretty extensive background with the fire folks. I spent 30 years with the US Forest Service, and been involved in many major forest events. I spent 30 years with the US Forest Service and been involved in many major fires and incidents. And I heard today from the fire folks that, you know, they have concern because a, a fire is very volatile and especially in earlier stages, very difficult to deal with. Somebody brought up the Trail Fire, the, the fire recently down in the Forest Hill area. And I have a son that was on that fire. And of course, I know the Forest Hill area very well. And there, they were able to very efficiently evacuate and that situation there is probably much worse than what we would see with this project in terms of the threat to the community. And on the El Dorado side, headed towards Georgetown and the steep terrain, the difficulty that they had to deal with, but there were no structures lost. And they were able to evacuate people on both the El Dorado side and the Forest Hill side. I at one time went down to Southern California and in the Lake Arrowhead area, they were able to evacuate 40,000 people overnight. And the next day, the fire came up the hill and, you know, they, they very easily could have lost that whole community. And so, there's been a lot of success. The fire people that we have, particularly up in this area, I would say, you know, you look at the fire departments you have in North Tahoe and the North Star, you have Cal Fire, you have other fire agencies in the basin, you have around the area, you have the US Forest Service, you have a very active sheriff and law enforcement team. And so, really, I think, you know, you need to give those folks credit because they're going to be able to really deliver if a fire comes here. I know early, in an earlier presentation, somebody showed a picture of the King Fire and how scary that was. And it would be scary when you see that huge cloud coming up over the lake from, from this area. But I was very, you know, I was involved in the Star Fire, which was the same type of thing. And I know the terrain on the other side very well and it's, was very unlikely that the King Fire was going to get to the lake. If it went beyond the French Meadows Basin, it probably would be up towards the Donner Sumaterre on Highway 80 where it would top out. I think the, you know, the issues for fire in this area, well, it's going to be a start that's somewhere within the basin or in the Truckee area is the likelihood of where a fire would start. And so, you know, your local fire people are going to be the first ones on the scene and they're going to be the ones to handle it. And I did hear that there's the ability to evacuate fairly, pretty effectively and with your law enforcement people. And so, at any rate, I guess what I'm saying is the evacuation concern for me is not as great as maybe some people are expressing. And I also would say that people are concerned about 760 homes, but, you know, if, if you go on the other side of the road and you build 1,360, you're going to have the same impacts on Highway 287. And that's already zoned. That's already zoned to, that's already zoned for the property owners to exert their property rights on that property. And so, at any rate, you know, it's, it's one or the other probably in the future. So, at any rate, that's kind of where, you know, I come down on. I'm not seeing the tipping point maybe that some of the other people are here.
Out of all due respect, Rich, I will tell you that the battalion chief for Cal Fire doesn't agree with you and that, in this area. And that, that I will disagree with you that this is not like Forest Hill. There's a higher concentration of population here and again, a very limited roadway to get people out. So, I kind of disagree, this is not Forest Hill.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I will respond that you are, you know, I'll say respectfully too, but you're not the battalion chief and you're giving us a secondhand opinion here and so...
Wait a second, you guys. You know, I used to have control over this commission for a couple of months in my, in my chairmanship and now all of a sudden, I can't do it. But anyway.
You're welcome to talk to Troy.
I think the discussion is good though because you see that we've, I think, listened and we have divergent views and we're kind of arguing, not arguing, but discussing with each other the, our different views and I think that's healthy. Sometimes we, we, we sit here and we just vote in on minor projects, smaller ones than this, of course. So, I think this is kind of healthy to let us each kind of express our opinions on, on the subject, so.
Well, I would, I would just encourage you, Rich, to have a conversation with Troy, the battalion chief up here.
I thought I ended it, but end this night.
Could I, could I chime in? My turn?
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand both Rich and Wayne what they're saying and I think maybe the question isn't so much if the first responders aren't capable of handling it or anything like that. It's just that, are we going to make it harder on them? Whereas the tipping point that we're, that if they're, if they're questionable, maybe we should be planning ahead, saying they don't need to, you know, go heroic on that.
Yeah. What happens with, and what happened very quickly in, in this particular area? What happens is you have your first responders, it may be an engine or whatever, and they very quickly realize that the fire is growing beyond their control. And that's when they turn the fire over to a higher level team. I could see very quickly where you have a fire in the basin that you would go up to a type two, type one, which would be a top national level team, very easily it would go to that level. And you would have some of the top firefighters, they come as an organized crew and they pick up the fire and they handle it very adeptly real quickly. So, there's a order in the incident command system that allows for quick escalation of crews if the fire situation or any emergency really calls for it.
Okay, I think, I think we're about ready unless we have new, new, new comments here that we can start the process and attorney, our county council has a word of wisdom for us here.
No word of wisdom, just that I'm going to suggest we take each item separately. And I'd ask you to have the audience hold any demonstration. We need to record the votes. We need to hear where the votes are. We have a court recorder that needs to hear it. Disruption is not going to help us get through this.
Yeah, could you just kind of, kind of keep your peace while we're getting through the vote because every one of these are going to have a roll call vote and our recorder's got to record it and, and our clerk's being called about to...
If there's a motion to deny, you wouldn't have to deal with all of it individually, would you?
What was the question?
The question is if there's a motion to deny, you don't have to, you wouldn't have to go line by line, would you then?
Well, that's why we're going to take it step by step, so don't get ahead of yourself. What I'm going to suggest right now is we first, let's focus on our first motion because how that motion comes out does, does hinge on whether, how far you will be going beyond that. So, let's take number one first.
Okay, is there, is there a motion on item number one on the board there and in our package to certify the final EIR with the errata?
Is it just me or is that hard to read?
You better get your glasses on.
At pursuant to CEQA?
There, that's better.
Certify the Mars Valley, no, wait a second.
Did you just change that?
Yeah, where did we go?
Where'd it go? That's a different one. I was reading from a different...
Do you want, do you want the other one? Let me, let me read it for you.
And then somebody can still...
Yes, yes. Yes, it's still going. It's still on board. Okay, so, the first recommendation that staff has before you is a recommendation to certify the Mars Valley West specific plan, final EIR and errata, prepared pursuant to CEQA and adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program, supported by and incorporating by reverence in its entirety, the findings of fact and statement of overriding consideration. That is the first, and again, this is a recommendation to the board and that is your first recommendation that I would ask you to decide whether that is your motion or whether we have an alternate motion on the floor.
Can, can I ask a question? If there isn't, if there isn't support for that motion or a second, does it die?
I haven't heard what the motion is. What I, what I've told you is what the recommendation, what the staff's recommendation is.
Well, if somebody doesn't say so move, what you've just said and doesn't get a second, then doesn't it die?
Then we don't have that motion on the table and I will ask the commission whether they have an alternate motion that they wish to propose.
So, the alternate motion could be to deny.
You know.
All right, so is the motion, let me clarify, is the motion right now on the table to recommend denial of certification of the EIR? Is, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
I second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We need a roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Motion carries.
It's a 5-2.
To deny the EIR.
All right. Now, for the record, first let me clarify what this means. What this means is in order to recommend approval of the specific plan, there had to be a, a recommendation that passed to certify the EIR because under CEQA, you first must consider your environmental document before you consider your project. For the record though, in moving this forward to the board, I would ask that you do take the next motion, which is the adopt the resolution to prove, prove the specific plan. Now, by, by law, you, you, you only have one option in front of you, that is the recommendation for denial because you did not recommend certifying the EIR. But I'd ask just for the record that we present that to the board and if you wanted to add into the record at that point, any comments or considerations for the board to take on because this will all move up to the, to the board with these recommendations.
Is there a motion to deny this specific plan?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Didn't move and seconded? Roll call?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Motion carries to deny the specific plan. Do we have to go any further?
We don't need to take that. No. We do not have to because all the other, we're going to skip down to the resolution on the community plan for one reason only and...
Which number is that?
That is number five. And what I would ask you to consider only is whether you wanted to act on adding in the associated fire safety policies. You don't need to, but if you wanted to, you could consider that as a separate recommendation. Otherwise, split it. Let me try and clarify. Once, once you, okay, once you have decided to recommend denial of the specific plan, the reason we're not going through the rest of these is they're essentially all contingent on a recommendation of approval of the specific plan. So, we need not go through all the various numbers that follow this because it would be nonsensical that you recommended that we don't certify the EIR and we recommend that you do not, that the board not approve the specific plan. That's why we're not going through the rest of them. The only question I have to pose to you and it's simply a question as to whether you wanted to take up the community plan amendment separately at this point or not.
I would make that motion and it's dealing with preparedness plan. It's been developed and adding that to the...
And again, I want to clarify here, you have recommended not to certify the EIR. I'm asking you to make this recommendation simply so that the board understands where you might be with the community plan. So, it doesn't really, it doesn't carry any force and effect in terms of, we still have to have a certified EIR, okay?
What are we trying to say about the community plan?
Oh, what I'm saying about the community plan is only the issue of adding the goals and policies regarding emergency preparedness and whether you wanted to provide any guidance to the board on that item. Again, I'm not asking you to act on it. Obviously, you can't really, you can't recommend approval because you're not certifying the EIR. But because it is an issue that's been brought up in this hearing, I'm only asking whether you want to give some guidance to the board on that issue. You need not do it. We can simply stop here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for stopping.
I've already, I've already made the motion that we go ahead and recommend that this, and I think we're talking about the East Side Emergency Evacuation Plan, which has been put together by the various agencies and is very thorough document, dealing with evacuations on the east side, including the basin, part of Placer County. And so, I remember reading where one of the things that we were talking about is adding this plan to the Mars Valley Plan. And that would provide a little bit more teeth in terms of evacuation plans in the Mars Plan than currently exists.
Stacy, Stacy has a comment. Stacy, Stacy has a plan. Wait, go with Stacy.
Just a second.
I just want to clarify that the East Side Operational Emergency Plan, adopted by the board, what we're asking is that...
You're cutting out, Stacy. I think there's some wrong with your mic.
Stacy, Stacy, could you, could you, could you get another mic there or could you, wait a second, maybe a, maybe a battery on that one is going out. There you go. Sorry. That's not on maybe.
Okay. Hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so with regards to the East Side Operational Emergency Plan that Commissioner Johnson you're referring to, that actually was adopted by the board in 2015. So, that's in place. But what we're asking, and it's separate from the project, is to implement Goal 6J and the associated policies, which are listed in the staff report of the June 9th meeting. And it was EPEP, so Emergency Preparedness Evacuation Plan, Goal 6J, and then Policy 6J1 and 6J2. All this does is require any and all future development projects within the Mars Valley Community Plan be required to, to provide an, an Emergency Preparedness Evacuation Plan for their project. So, completely separate, but it would, you know, be guidance to the board.
So, I'll reaffirm my motion on that then.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Been moved and seconded? Roll call?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
He stepped out of the room.
He stepped out.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Okay, I think unless I'm mistaken, this is, this completes our meeting today. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a final comment though to the members of the audience. First of all, I do, I think all of us here appreciate your, your comments. Sometimes we get a little upset with your exuberance, but that's to be understood. But my, my, my big thing was that in the EIR was that, I think the EIR was adequately written, but I didn't like the overriding consideration part. But anyway, I want to thank you for coming out and being passionate about your, about the lake.
Mr. Chair? If you could clarify for the record that this is a recommendation to the board, it will be, it will be publicly noticed when it's scheduled for the board. There are no appeal rights. It goes straight to the board with your recommendation.
This goes directly to the board of supervisors and will be notified or noticed. Yes, this meeting is adjourned.